Yeah, and it shuts off after five minutes.
Yes.
Ready?
Story of my life. Go figure. Welcome, everybody. Boy, is this great to see this many people in here. If we serve cookies and tea the rest of the year, this will happen? That's the secret, is teas and cookie. Tea and cookie. Beers don't know. All right, we'll officially get this started if we can have roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Genin.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll do the pledge allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Now we shall move to item number five.
Minutes of the August 13, 2018 meeting.
Motion to approve Minutes.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item number six.
Minutes of the executive session of August 13, 2018.
Move to approve the executive session Minutes.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item seven, update. Go through a couple items real quick here. We have Thursday Night Groove Concert Series. The Thursday Night Groove Concert Series continues at Shreveport Park, Riverfront Park, on Thursday, August 30, 2018 with local band Corporate Rock. Event is open from 6 to 9. Rock Island Happy Joes will have pizza for sale and Bent River will have the beer available. Guests are encouraged to bring lawn chairs and then for more information, call 309-732-7275. Got the Rock Island Grand Prix, a lot of fun. Professional kart racing, food, beverages, and family activities will take place during the Rock Island Grand Prix on Friday, August 31, 2018 through Sunday, September 2, 2018 in the district of downtown Rock Island. Weekend activities run from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. with practice runs highlighting Friday nights starting at 5 p.m. Admission is free for all the races. For more information, you can go to www.rockislandgrandpre.com. And we got the Labor Day Parade. The 34th Annual Rock Island Labor Day Parade is scheduled for Monday, September 3, 2018 at 9:30 a.m. The first Labor Day Parade was held in 1985 as part of Rock Island's 150th Birthday Celebration. This year, the parade will celebrate "Love Where You Live", a look at what is truly loved about the area and community. The parade will start on 33rd Street and goes west on 18th Avenue, takes a left turn on 24th Street, and disbands at the Rock Island High School parking lot. Come out and celebrate and enjoy all the fun. Item eight.
Presentation of the 2018 Rock Island Citizen of the Year Awards.
Alderman Genin.
Well, welcome, everyone. As city council members, we are assigned to certain committees throughout the year, and I have to tell you, this is one of the best committees that an Alderman could be assigned to, where we get to celebrate you, celebrate the citizens of Rock Island who make a contribution to this city. We're pleased tonight to award the 2018 winners who serve as examples of everyday people who participate in the life of Rock Island, not only to improve its conditions and shape its future. Each of our awards tonight, they see themselves as part of the fabric of our city and they share in the qualities in to shape the future of this community. The qualities of having the motivation, the skills, and the ability to make a difference. Our committee consists of winners that won last year, co-chair Alderman Parker and our city clerk Judith Gilbert. I don't know if any of you know this, a couple of years ago, we were named as the 10 charming small-town celebrations throughout the Midwest. We were listed as number six. As our presentation people come up forward, we're going to begin this process and begin with awarding these wonderful awards.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alderman Dylan Parker. I have the privilege of representing the fifth ward here on city council. And I also had the privilege of interviewing the winner of our business category Citizen of the Year Award, Peewee's Restaurant. Opened... Opened since March of 2017. Peewee's Restaurant has become a staple on 9th Street and 21st Avenue in Rock Island's West End neighborhoods and business districts. Located in a spectacularly rehabilitated property at 2035 Martin Luther King Drive, 9th Street, Peewee's is known for its delicious Cajun and southern-influenced menu. Business owner Will Clay is proud of his success and wants to contribute to the growing revitalization of Rock Island's western neighborhoods. Named after Mr. Clay's father, Waylon "Peewee" Clay Senior, the restaurant continues to grow and is an often-visited establishment for church, social, and school groups, neighborhood patrons, and those looking for a fresh and home-cooked meal. So congratulations, Mr. Clay. Would you come on up, please?
Hi, my name is Bernie Carmack, and I have the privilege of introducing you to our two winners in the education category this year, which I'm told is a rarity, but I'm so happy they decided to do that. The first one is Alexis DeWildey. According to Alexis, a lifelong resident of Rock Island, there is no point in fighting your passion. Alexis has known her entire life that she had a passion to make Rock Island a better place, and she is spending her entire life doing it. After college graduation with a teaching certificate in hand, she came back to Rock Island to teach with the goal to make a difference in the lives of others. Twenty years later, Alexis is still doing just that. She has taught in five Rock Island elementary schools and currently teaches at Ridgewood. Her passion is working with students and creating an atmosphere where they can not only learn, but thrive. Meeting her students where they are, she inspires them to believe in themselves and go further than their imaginations. Most important in all that time is the love and work spent building relationships with her students and their families. She strives to create an atmosphere of respect and empowerment for those children who don't always experience it elsewhere. Her classroom is set up for flexible seating with no desks to create a more home-like environment. She has been attentive to making sure there are built-in sensory accommodations like chairs that wiggle so that students who need to move more are able to do that. Alexis hits the academics hard, but she is equally attentive to character and self-worth. Her students run their own classroom meetings, which includes family meetings once a week. Through those family meetings, students learn how to deal with conflict, communicate their emotions in healthy ways, how to take care of one another, and how to hold one another accountable. They talk about what's going well and what's not, and then what to do about that together. She works with the students to build relationships, resiliency, and grit. Alexis has utilized many community resources, including bringing WQPT into her classroom to teach the kids computer coding. The students read fables and then were able to code a program to retell the fable, a basic exercise in the language arts curriculum, but with an extended learning twist. If students couldn't type or write well, they could narrate it through the code and still meet the Common Core standard of retelling a story. That effort led to a visit from State Representative Tony McComby, who came to see the effort firsthand. Alexis is now working with Representative McComby on revising state educational policy. This fall, Alexis said goodbye to four of her former students who she stayed in touch with throughout their education at Rock Island High School. All four are first in their families to go to college and attest that it would not have happened if it were not for Mrs. DeWildey supporting, pushing, and caring for them along the way. Congratulations. Our next teacher is Mary Kamoke. Ask anyone at Thurgood Marshall Learning Center to name a teacher who is a driving force of change and inspiration, and Mary Kamoke's name appears first on the list every time. The 2018-19 school year will be her 20th year teaching, first at the K-6 levels and currently at the junior high school level as a special education teacher at Thurgood Marshall Learning Center, an alternative school in our district. She teaches students who have experienced trauma in their families, including violent deaths and incarceration of immediate family members. Yet she gravitates towards these at-risk students and spends a considerable amount of time establishing relationships with them and their families. In her interview, Mary said that when she transferred to Thurgood, she felt like she had landed just where she was meant to be. She strives to meet the emotional as well as academic needs of her students. Mary is known to involve all of her students in community service projects. She believes that her students have a duty to contribute to society and to ensure this will happen throughout their life. She brings her kids to the community and the community to her kids. With her colleagues, Mary secured grants and other funds to establish a kitchen express at school, and now the students cook for their teachers and staff, conduct an annual chili supper to raise money for the student hunger drive, and cater at district and community events. In conjunction with a neighboring Presbyterian church, students and staff established several large community gardens, which recently won them a beautification award through the city of Rock Island. Students help to plant, maintain, and harvest the produce. Harvested produce is sent home with school families and used in preparing meals, including the chili supper and catered meals. Mary shared that she loves seeing even the toughest kids digging up those potatoes and getting excited about it. One more opportunity for Mary to teach life skills out in the community is her annual field trip with students to local restaurants. She's most recently taking them to Peewee's in Rock Island. Mary was quick to credit the owner of Peewee's for devoting a lot of time for questions from the students about the restaurant business and what he looks for in job applications and interviews. Each restaurant has also conducted tours with the students of their kitchens, and then Mary, of course, buys lunch for her students. Practicing what she preaches, after Mary's children were grown and off to college, she moved from Geneseo to Rock Island because she wanted to live and be active in the community where her students lived. When she's not giving her usual 110% to her students, she has been a member of the Rock Island NAACP, Black Hawk Reading Council, Community Caring Conference, and the Rock Island Education Association. Mary's passion for giving hope and a positive future for the at-risk youth is evident in her care, teaching, and opportunities she creates each day for her students to thrive and lead. Congratulations, Mary.
Good evening. My name's Grace Diaz Shirk. I'm very happy to be part of the ceremony tonight, always happy because I love that the city of Rock Island recognizes their citizens because that's our wonderful asset that we have here that I think shine far and above other places. And I'm really excited to introduce this individual Citizen of the Year winner, which I've known for a long, long, long time. I don't want to keep saying long because it'll show our age, but it is Udel Watts III. He was born... Stand near me while we're talking. Okay, come on, come on. He was born and raised in Rock Island and is a very committed leader and community advocate. He has raised six children, and he is very proud to say that every one of them graduated from college. He is a member of the Optimist Club, and he serves on their leadership council. He volunteers at the St. Joseph Evening Meals, and he is a member of the Sacred Heart Parish where he finds his calling to fight for social justice and community change. Udel sits on the Rock Island Board of Trustees and the Rock Island Library Foundation. He has volunteered as a basketball coach for years and mentored countless youth in Rock Island. He is always volunteering and often can be counted on to donate his chef skills for the library Food for Thought, the Quad City Botanical Center, and also to donate his chef skills at the Rock Island Mylan major fundraisers that they have. You know, we always try to ask all these people that we recognize, why? Or what's significant to you and why do you do this? What's most significant to Udel, and he gets very emotional when he talked about it, is his work on the library board and the library foundation. He becomes emotional because his mother had a wonderful love for books, and in her honor, he created a fund in his mother's name, Lorraine, four years ago, and has been able to raise $32,000 to help the children and the youth of our community. Udel also organized a trivia fundraiser for the past eight years, which nets the library about $4,000, and again, these are used for our children and our young adults. And when we asked why, why, Udel? Why are you doing this? And he does this and so much more, I'd be here all night. But when we asked why, I love this, he said, you know, I've had many opportunities to leave Rock Island, but I just can't. I'm joined at the hip to Rock Island, and I enjoy working for the betterment of the community, of our community. Well, you know what, Udel? The city of Rock Island, we are truly blessed that you are joined at the hip to our community, and we want to say thank you by honoring you as Citizen of the Year in the category of individual. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Fidler, and I have the honor this evening of presenting the award for the professional category Citizen of the Year. And we are presenting that this year to Ray Lind. You know, we've had it both ways tonight. You can come up now and stand in front of people a long time and come up at the end. When the city of Rock Island recently updated its fire and building code requirements, many Realtors argued against the decision, and there was a growth of tension in the community between the city of Rock Island and Realtors and builders. When the relationship between the city and the real estate community continued to inflame, one Realtor made a particular effort to work with the city to ease the disagreement. Ray Lind is a lifelong Rock Island resident and a Realtor with rural and rule. By inviting council members to attend Realtor meetings and by accepting invitations from council members to attend Rock Island neighborhood and civic organization meetings, Ray has distributed his commitment to working through disagreements and selling Rock Island properties. After attending his first meeting at, I believe, Longview, Broadway, Highland Park, several of those meetings, he has been to every neighborhood meeting since that first invitation was extended and has become the cheerleader among the realty community for the city of Rock Island. But involvement in Rock Island is nothing new for Ray. He loves to give back to the community. Through the years, he has coached Little League Baseball for 14 years, wrestling, and been a board member of the Christian Care Center. After experiencing hospice as a family member, Ray is now an active member of the Unity Point Hospice Board and visits patients while they are on their hospice journey. He helps with the Red Cross program putting in smoke detectors. He went to Texas and helped with Hurricane Harvey victims, and he has done missionary work in Jamaica. He does it all out of a strong faith. Ray considers his most significant contribution to all the lives, to be all of the lives that he has been able to touch and to affect. He has enjoyed teaching young people how to have pride in their community and how to pass that on. Ray says that we are here to serve, and he wants to live his life with a servant's heart. Ray, we thank you for serving in this community and being one of our Citizens of the Year this year. Congratulations.
Hi. I am honored to present the Citizen of the Year in the organization category to the Broadway Historic District Association. The Broadway Historic District Association has been a Rock Island powerhouse for historic preservation. Sorry, I was going to put this on paper because this would happen to me. It's been a powerhouse for historic preservation, organized neighborhoods, city beautification, cultural diversity, and citizen empowerment. Recently, due to popular demand, the association brought back their Mother's Day Tour of Homes. With an all-volunteer group, the neighborhood rallied together to bring in over 200 visitors to the heart of Rock Island to enjoy our community's architectural heritage. In order to host such an event, several community cleanups were organized to get the neighborhood looking good for company and neighbors that came out in droves to spend time as ambassadors or house captains to help guide visitors. The Mother's Day Tour of Homes, combined with Broadway Beautification Awards, the Great Unveilings, Community Cash Mobs, educational seminars, and several other events demonstrate the association's continued excellence at making Rock Island a unique and lovely place to live and play. I must add to my script, everyone on the committee couldn't believe that the association had not won this award in the past, and I think that really speaks to the work that's been done over the years. So congratulations to the Broadway Historic District Association for Citizen of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is John Gripp. I'm the director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Rock Island and last year's winner of Employee Citizen of the Year. I take great pride in working for the city of Rock Island and the community that I grew up in, and I'm surrounded by great people every single day. One of these great people is Pat O'Brien, this year's Citizen Employee of the Year. Pat, please come on up. Pat has been a city employee since November of 2010. He's now a supervisor in the Public Works Department Utilities Maintenance Division. Pat is an active member at St. John's Lutheran Church, where he volunteers in many different capacities. Pat graduated from Rock Island High School, where he was a track athlete, and for the past four years has served as an official for track and field and cross-country for IHSA. Pat is an Army veteran serving both in Operation Desert Shield and Operation Desert Storm. On his off time, Pat enjoys lead singing vocals in the band Boot Hill, which he's done for the past 20 years. These days, his hobbies are that of his three daughters. It's with great pleasure, from one Rock Islander to another, to present the Citizen Employee of the Year to Pat O'Brien.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming. I'm Judith Gilbert, the city clerk, and I serve on the Rock Island Citizen of the Year Committee. And I'm proud to present the winner in the youth category, Jada Vissi. Jada, a recent graduate of Rock Island High School, was president during her senior year, a member of the National Honor Society, and a student member of the Rock Island Mylan School Board for three years. Jada co-founded the Rock Island Riveters Group, Rock Island Voices Ensuring Their Equal Rights Are Secure. This advocacy group exposes young women to work in male-dominated fields. She also completed a year-long Commitment of Service activities as a debutante in the Quad City Negro Heritage Society Debutante Cotillion. Jada took many advanced placement and honors classes, was an honors student for four years, and finished in the top 10 of her graduating class. Jada was a member of the high school marching band, symphonic band, pit orchestra for school musicals and plays, and also acted in them too, and a member of the Quad Cities Youth Symphony Orchestra. She earned her Certified Nursing Assistant certification during her senior year and is attending Mount Mercy University in Cedar Rapids this fall. As one of Jada's teachers wrote about her, "Jada goes above and beyond every day at Rock Island High School. Every day, she works to better herself and those around her. She recognizes areas of need in her community and works to bring positive change." Jada represents Rock Island High School well. She cares deeply about her education, but she cares about bettering her community and being involved as well. I have no doubt of her future success or the impact she will have on Rock Island in the future, and I have no doubt either. It is my honor and privilege to present the 2018 Rock Island Citizen of the Year Award in the youth category to Jada Vissi. in the youth category to Jada Vissi.
We also recognize that there are many institutions and organizations and individuals who don't live in Rock Island but make a huge impact into the well-being of our community. And our last category is what we would call an honorary citizen. This year's honorary citizen award goes to Dino and Tina Hayes, the directors of the Center for Living Arts. Dino and Tina opened the Center for Living in Arts in Rock Island in 2006. The center is currently about theater, but it's much more than that in their focus. Their focus is in the community built among these budding artists and the life-changing message of the stories that they tell. It's a place where everyone is welcome. They do not require tryouts. Everyone is welcome. It's a place where everyone is an artist and encouraged to hone in their craft. Located at 2008 Fourth Avenue in Rock Island, the Center for Living Arts provides fall and spring programming for kids of all ages, from grades one through eight in middle school and high school. Just this summer, the center provided two summer programs and camps for middle school and high school students, and in just two weeks, these students pull together a show, from Godspell to Jesus Christ Superstar. There is a cost to students, but sales from concessions go to the scholarships to fund so that no one is turned away. In terms of their community involvement, they both are active in the arts community, serving as creative directors for the Penguin Project of the Quad Cities at Augustana College. The Penguin Project is part of the Quad Cities at Augustana and is completely a free theater camp exclusively for children with special needs. When I asked them why they picked Rock Island to open Center for the Living Arts, their answer was simple: Because Rock Island was the easiest place to open a new business. The staff of the city were the most pleasant to work with, and we felt that Rock Island truly wanted us as a new business. They purchased their current building and, just this past year, were able to pay off their mortgage. More importantly, around 4,500 people come down to the center each year to watch performances, to drop their children off for rehearsals, and during these rehearsals, Dino and Tina make a point to let parents know of the places to hang out in downtown Rock Island. They make a huge impact on the lives of their students. In fact, this year, they had a student perform in her last show. She started with them at the age of seven, and next year, she'll be off to college studying music theater. When asked what motivates them, they say that it's the lives of their students. They teach tolerance, they teach acceptance, and they teach community. By not requiring auditions because of their belief that we are all artists, we all have something positive to contribute to the whole. This is a worthwhile organization of two lovely people who are not in this for the money. They have no staff but themselves, and with a seating capacity of 130, they are constantly having waiting lists for tickets, they have waiting lists for cast members of their shows, and Rock Island is lucky to have this organization and this dynamic duo as part of our community making a better life for our kids. Congratulations. And each year, behind me of these most exemplary residents, one is accepted as the overall Citizen of the Year. That will be our grand marshal for our parade. But to keep you in suspense, we do have an announcement from our Labor Day Committee, Grace Shirk, to give you a little bit more information on the parade coming up.
One more time. Do they get a group picture?
We haven't yet.
Not yet?
Yeah, we have.
Why don't we get the group picture, and then we'll let you all sit down, because I know you're all...
Come on, it's cozy. You might need a couple of layers here.
I didn't say that.
Are you able to get us there?
Hang on, we got someone behind you there who wants to take one.
She's not there.
Thank you very much.
Standing group of individuals, give them a round of applause.
We have been blessed with the Citizen of the Year Award since 20... Come on, Grace. 1985... 87, sorry. And it's just such a wonderful award because it's a wonderful opportunity for us to say thank you. And as was mentioned earlier, we started the Rock Island Labor Day Parade in 1985, and we have always had one person who becomes the overall grand marshal. Well, that's part of how this all came about, the Citizen of the Year. We started thinking, well, all the wonderful people we have out there that we would like to say thank you to, and so we said, well, let's recognize them all and pick different categories. And I'm proud to say I've been on that committee since the inception, and I've been a part of the Rock Island Labor Day Parade, either in it or working for it, for the past 34 years. And how many people can say, as Dave pointed out, that we're in the top 10 of Midwest communities for activities that take place, celebrations that take place for the Labor Day holiday? And so, we ask our families, our neighbors, our schools, our churches, our organizations, our clubs, our businesses, to come help us celebrate. And to celebrate who? You, our citizens, our city, our businesses, and organizations that are all part of Rock Island. This year, our theme was "Love Where You Live." So we wanted to hear, what do our entrants think about where they live and what do they love about it? So if you want to know what they love about it, come to the Rock Island Labor Day Parade, September 3rd, Monday, and we're going to start, as was mentioned earlier, at 9:30 in the morning at Washington Junior High, and we end up at Rock Island High School, shooting straight down 18th Avenue to 24th Street, over to 25th Avenue, and then over to Rock Island High School. We are truly blessed that we have this parade, and we are truly blessed to have that wonderful committee that puts it all together, and we would not be having this without Mary Chapel and Art Milton, who lead this group of individuals who put this parade together every year. And I'd ask that you give them a hand, please. Now, every single winner here is our honored guest, and we will provide transportation to you, so we ask that you please be at the U.S. Bank, and I'll be there, so if you're not sure where, look for me. And I know Mary has walked around and gave you all information. And then, one of you will be selected to be the grand marshal of our parade. And I'm going to turn it over to the lovely Ms. Stacy Fiddler, who was the winner last year, and she's going to let you know who it is. Thank you, everybody.
I found that grand marshal seat at the front of the parade to be the best view I have ever had of the city of Rock Island, because there were so many wonderful glorious faces just celebrating the weekend together, and I am honored to get to present to the person who will be in that grand marshal place this year. Some recognitions are long overdue. There are people all over Rock Island who have shaped this community quietly and consistently and with a heart for the greatness of what Rock Island is and what Rock Island can be. This year's overall Citizen of the Year is one of those people. He has served the city of Rock Island his entire life, and we are quite certain that as a committee, that we only heard just a bit of the collected stories about Udell Watts III. Some of this you've already heard, but we want to repeat and tell more. Udell was born and raised here. He raised his six children here and is proud of them all being college-educated. From an early age, his involvement in the Roman Catholic Church shaped his heart with a love for social justice. He was, at 20 years of age, the only African-American on the board that established Franciscan Hospital. When protests were being organized outside the construction of the hospital due to the lack of diversity on the jobs, it was Udell who helped create dialogue between the board and the union workers. When there were race riots in downtown Rock Island, Udell was on the front lines brokering peace and calling for civility. He has given heart and soul to creating a community that finds ways to talk to and to care for one another. He's been a businessman in the community, Old Arthur's... You can see the shirt. Old Arthur's barbecue sauce, and from that base, he has created opportunities for others. As an active member of the Rock Island JC's, he was instrumental in creating a new city park called JC Park when one was being closed due to the construction of I-92. To help fund the construction of the park, he and others printed stock certificates and sold shares to the neighbors, and they raised over $10,000 to create that park. But more importantly, they gave the entire neighborhood a sense of ownership, and it was one of the cleanest parks in the Rock Island area. When his neighbors and friends saw a need for things for kids to do, they formed the Rock Island Striders, which still exists as the Rock Island Track Club. He has volunteered as a junior high basketball coach and mentored countless Rock Island youth. Udell is always volunteering. His humble heart and his spirit touch people far and wide. His chef expertise has supported the Quad City Botanical Center, the Library Foundation, and the Rock Island Myland School District fundraisers. He's found ways to support Thurgood Marshall Learning Center, Rock Island High School, and Alamon High School. He's a member of the Rock Island East Molin Optimist Club and serves on their Leadership Council. He's a member of Sacred Heart Parish. He volunteers at St. Joseph Evening Meal at the Rock Island Township Building. He raised money this past year to send textbooks to Africa. But when you ask Udell what is closest to his heart, he talks about the library. He serves on the library board and is the liaison to the Library Foundation. And about four years ago, as was stated, he started and supports memorial endowment at the library named for his mother, Lorraine. The principal of that endowment and other fundraisers support both children and young adult books throughout the community and the library system, giving extra attention to those kids at ages when they need to have that kind of stimulation. Udell states that after all of these years, he continues to be involved in the betterment of this community because he can't sit still when we have so many children in Rock Island. He believes that it is essential for young people in Rock Island to be mentored and taught that regardless of their age, they have a responsibility to create a better community too. He models this through his relationships and finding needs to address and creating activities or organizations to help get to a solution. Udell, you have given a lifetime of gifts to your neighbors in Rock Island.
I'll get my head through that door.
We got people who can shove you out. We are thankful that we can honor you for those gifts, and we look forward to celebrating.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I was thinking about what she said there about being the leader of the parade last year, and I was going to tell her, if you're not the leading horse, the view never changes, you know? Most people know that, you know? I'll just take a minute, because I guess I should. I really want to say thank you. I am truly humbled. I'm proud to have spent my time in Rock Island, my entire life, with all its ups and downs, to still my city. I am honored and truly humbled to be singled out and recognized in this fashion. Actually, I had this prayer just in case. I wasn't really thinking it was going to happen. I think if you hear what my daughter and my sister heard me say there, I truly was surprised. Is I should thank you for the opportunity to serve whenever and wherever I can, especially when it involves the youth of our city. As grateful as I am and as much as I appreciate the acknowledgement, it's been an even greater reward to have been given the opportunity to influence and assist several generations of young people, whether it was through the Rock Island Public Library, coaching ball, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, or one of the service clubs. The Big Brothers and Big Sisters did not exist as that in 1972, it was just the Big Brothers. And I was at a meeting where they made a presentation, and I took on a young man. He was 11 years old at the time as a Big Brother, and a lot of the fellows in the JC's took him, and I remember hearing him tell stories for a year or so, and then it was over with. 42 years later, 2002 is when my relationship ended with that young man, and I think I'm the better for it. I got more as much out of it as he did, and I enjoyed every minute of the time that I had him in my life. Those are the kind of things that make a difference. Tomorrow's problems demand bright, hard-working, and dedicated individuals to solve them. We create these individuals by the positive actions on our part as the adult community, by supporting our schools, libraries, youth groups, and service clubs. I thank you, and I especially thank my family and my brother Jim, who couldn't be here tonight, but never says no when he can, when he's able. I thank you as a community, and finally, to finish with a quote from Joe Pesci from the movie Goodfellas, it's been my privilege.
So that concludes this part of it. If those that wish to stick around may, otherwise, you're welcome to head home or do whatever you need to do.
Well, everybody...
Yeah, see you, guys.
Yeah, my job's done.
I did, but don't go. Don't tell me Josh went to go get coffee.
Oh, there he is back here.
It's cooled off now after that presentation.
I'm very particular about the temperature of my coffee.
Yeah.
It's got to be. The minute it stops being scalding, I'm not a fan. I can't do iced coffees.
A couple of Wisconsin owners will be back there forever.
Wait until you have a sip.
Well, you know, the McDonald's lady...
Oh, yeah. I have no doubt.
Yeah, yeah. Son of a gun.
You're on the beach somewhere.
Yeah.
And our guy...
Well, that doesn't...
That's so fun listening to that.
Did they take a picture of Udell and the mayor and his...
Yeah, they did.
I need that for the big plaque.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there should be several Holly Sparks, and I forgot one, and I know that there are...
Jason?
Yeah.
I got more as much out of it as he did, and I enjoyed every minute of the time that I had him in my life. Those are the kind of things that make a difference. Tomorrow's problems demand bright, hardworking, and dedicated individuals to solve them. We create these individuals by the positive actions on our part as the adult community by supporting our schools, libraries, youth groups, and service clubs. I thank you, and I especially thank my family and my brother Jim, who couldn't be here tonight, but never says no when he can, when he's able. I thank you as a community. And finally, to finish with a quote from Joe Pesci from the movie Goodfellas, it's been my privilege.
So that concludes this part of it. If those that wish to stick around may. Otherwise, you're welcome to head home or do whatever you need to do.
Well, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, see you guys.
Yeah, well, my job's done.
I did, but don't go. Don't tell me Josh went to go get coffee.
Oh, there he is back here. It's cooled off now after that presentation. I'm very particular about the temperature of my coffee. It's got to be. The minute it stops being scalding, not a fan. I can't do iced coffees.
A couple of council members will be back there forever.
Well, you know, the McDonald's lady. Oh, yeah. I have no doubt. Yeah, yeah. Son of a gun.
Yeah.
And our guy. Well, that doesn't disappoint your heart. That's so fun listening to that.
Jason, yeah.
Did they take a picture of Udel and the mayor and his role award? Okay. I need that for the big plaque.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there should be several Holly Sparks when I forget one, and I know that there are.
I hope it is, because that's what I've been calling it.
I'm terrible with names, and it's bad being representing them, you know? Because I'll be like, I'll have people, when I'm walking my dog around the neighborhood or something, they'll walk up and be like, hey, what's up, Dylan? And be like, hi! Don't know who you are, sorry. You have a neck up. Sorry.
It makes a difference.
Maybe not quite as contentious as being a policeman, but being a lawyer probably...
All right, are we ready to? We lost a couple of council members. There comes one. Let's see what happened to James.
We still got Quorum.
Yep. Well, we want to make sure this is hearing, but all right. Ready for the next step?
Thank you, Judith.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Let's go to item number nine.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from American Dream Home Improvement regarding an appeal of the revocation of their transient merchant license.
All right, I want to hereby close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. First up, we would like to have the city attorney make a...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the public hearing, there are a number of exhibits, copies of which have been provided to the representative from American Dream Home this evening that will be made a part of the record of this public hearing. The first would be marked as Exhibit One and is a letter dated July 12, 2018, from the city manager, which was sent via certified mail to American Dream Home, noticing them up of the, giving them notice of the revocation of their transient merchant license pursuant to 8-427 of the city code. The specific sections of that code section cited are revocation for any violation of the city code and also any violation of any city or state law regulating the sales activities of the license holder. Attached as the second page of Exhibit One is the return of service proof of delivery by certified mail to American Dream Home, which will be made part of the record. The second exhibit is Exhibit Two, which are copies of the amended notices of hearing sent to each of the individual license holders. There was one main license obtained by American Dream Home, and then they had four employees that were added on as additional licensed individuals pursuant to that primary license. Each of them was sent an amended notice of tonight's hearing for August 27, 2018 at 6:45 PM. The reason why it was an amended notice was council for American Dream Home was unable to make it for the originally scheduled hearing, and so we had to send out an amended notice, and those were all mailed as indicated in Exhibit Two. Exhibit Three is the proof of service of this public hearing, the notice of this public hearing, which was published in the local newspaper, and we have as part of the public hearing process, that has to be published in the local newspaper, and we have proof of that publication in Exhibit Three. There were... Exhibit Four is an agreement signed by a citizen, Mr. Collier, and by a representative of American Dream Home, which is one of the reasons that brought us here before council this evening. Exhibit Five is a document signed by a Mr. Keith Mayer, who's also a citizen of Rock Island, who had also lodged a complaint with the city regarding his experience with American Dream Home. Exhibit Six is a second document executed by Mr. Collier and a representative of American Dream Home regarding proposed work to be performed at the house. That is Exhibit Six. And Exhibit Seven is a, for Mr. Mayer, is the companion document, which is the follow-up agreement or paperwork signed by Keith Mayer and a representative of American Dream Home dated 6/27/18, which is one of the reasons or one of the items that brought us here this evening. For the record, I'd also like to state that each of the complaining citizens was notified via telephone and also mail of tonight's hearing and notified that they would have the opportunity to come and speak if they so desired at this hearing this evening. Finally, I would note that it's been brought to the city attorney's attention that there is currently pending litigation up in Cook County regarding similar allegations of violations of the Consumer Protection Code for practices that have been alleged to have been occurring regarding American Dream Home Improvement, and I can provide, that's a public record. We can provide a copy of that to anyone who would like a copy. And with that, I would turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you much, very much. I'd like to now call on someone from American Dream Home Improvement and/or a representative. And then the city clerk will swear you in, please.
And could you please also sign that paper as well? State for the record your names, please.
Good evening. My name is John O'Connor. I'm an attorney, and I represent American Dream Home.
My name is Drew Kramer. I'm the chief compliance officer with American Dream Home Improvement.
Okay. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Well, we're brought here tonight because my client received a letter indicating that its solicitation licenses had been revoked for violation of state laws or the Rock Island City Code. I spoke with my client about this. Mr. Kramer is here to testify regarding the lack of any notice up until today's date as to why the license had been revoked. We have since learned coming here tonight that there were a couple complaints by homeowners who had asked for estimates regarding damage that had been done to their home. Their insurance representatives had come out and agreed that work needed to be done, agreed to an appraisal as to the cost of doing the work, and then both homeowners suddenly decided to cancel the agreements. It's worthy to note that these homeowners lived either right next to each other or one door down from each other. This is all we know. I know that the work was not done. The agreements were never gone through with. In fact, one of the homeowners, the papers weren't even processed because he called back shortly after having the estimate done. There is a case pending in Cook County, as council had indicated. That has not been adjudicated. I'm not sure what the relevancy of that is for this tonight's hearing. I ask that if there's any evidence that the city is going to put on that my client somehow either violated state laws or the Rock Island Code, that it be presented to the panel.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I was just going to wait to see what's asked of me, sir. Something specific?
Just explain to him the process of what happens with the homeowners.
Sure. So one of the things that we've made a change in our process this year is we have a two-step inspection process and contract process. So we do the inspection before the job, and we have the job estimated so we can make sure that at a separate point in time, not the point in time. So there's a two-step process, so the homeowner has ample opportunity to make sure we have everything aligned in terms of the consumer rights pamphlets, to make sure they have a contract with numbers on it for estimate for the labor material that it would cost for the job. I know it was mentioned that the homeowners that wanted to cancel were not permitted to cancel. I thoroughly reviewed the file notes and part of our compliance procedures, some of which are new in 2018. Both these jobs would have had to clear numerous milestones that we put in place in our operations to ensure that we're not going through or dropping materials on jobs where homeowners requested that they cancel. The, I'm sorry, the Keith, the last name, it's a little tough to pronounce, the Keith Mahan job, our salesman who was on that job didn't even turn the paperwork into process because before it was his time to do so, he received word from the homeowner that they wanted to cancel. Bill Collier, who was, I think, the cancellation request on his part, was about eight days after our representative met with the insurance company and approved the job. The paperwork was turned into process. According to the notes that I have on the file, the homeowner called in our office and requested that he wanted to cancel, which immediately kicked off our homeowner cancellation request procedure, and both of the jobs that were canceled have not only been placed on hold within our system, but in these cases to the point of where they're inactive, so there's no follow-up by any of our employees, and neither, we haven't asked or received any payment from either of the homeowners, and the jobs are completely inactive in our system.
Drew, let me ask you a couple of questions about the paperwork that council's marked. Exhibit number seven and five, those both deal with the Keith Maher job, correct?
Yes.
And exhibit number seven is the first document that's generated, and that's the estimate for the work that's...
That's the form to assess the damage on their house, to get the, to do the inspection, once the permission to go on the homeowner's house to assess the damage, and then...
And that document indicates that it's not a binding contract, just an estimate, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then later in the body, the document says that, again, this is not a binding agreement between you and HDI for any services, correct?
Correct.
And the next document that's generated is actually where there's a meeting of the minds, and the parties have agreed that the work's going to be, is going to go forward, and that's marked as exhibit number five, correct?
Yes.
And that's where the homeowner and American Dream Home Improvement representative sign off on that?
Yes.
Now, in that document, that also provides the homeowner on the back notice that they can still cancel the contract within five days if there's insurance coverage and within 13 days after they sign a proof of loss, correct?
Correct.
In that case, in this case, both those things happened, and in other words, they canceled before anything became final, correct?
Yes.
And the agreement also indicates that in no way is a homeowner ever responsible for any money above and beyond the insurance coverage except for the deductible, correct?
Yes, not without a written change order to...
And do you know in this case, both Mr. Maher and Mr. Collier, did they in fact get their roofs replaced?
No, they didn't. Oh, I, by another company, yes, I think a few days later after the cancellation was made with us, to my knowledge.
All right. That's all we have. Thank you.
Okay. And city council, if you guys have any questions, that's fine, but just want to remind you two and all, if anybody else that comes forward, nobody filed any paperwork to allow rebuttals or anything else between the two parties during this meeting, so it's strictly with the council and with the people at the podium. Okay, is anybody questions here?
It's not necessarily a question. It's, I think the two people that, the way I understand your operation works, the two people that you talk to, they should be quite happy that you found that they had insurance. And this is my view, I don't, it's not, it shouldn't even be subjective. You guys found the damage. You found that they had insurance. They filed a claim they had coverage, and had you folks not shown up, they wouldn't even have known they had the damage. That's the way I interpret this typical scenario. And I mean, and I don't have a dog in the fight either way.
Yes, that's, that's a legit view of the circumstances.
Thanks.
Yeah. Dave Morrison, I mean, in terms of these, the process for, on our end, for revoking a license, what is the bar that needs to be crossed here? Because there were... Let's answer that question first.
Sure. Well, pursuant, the answer to your question is in Section 8-427 under denial or revocation. In this particular case, it's under sub-paragraph B-2 and B-3. It says that the city manager may revoke any license issued under the provisions of this article, which is the Transient Merchant Act, by sending a notice of revocation by certified mail to the license holder at his last known address, return receipt requested, or by personal service on the license holder or its officers for any of the following causes. And these are the two causes that we believed could apply based on the complaints that were received by citizens. The first is for any violation of the provisions of this article. That's the ordinance itself. And the ordinance itself requires that American Dream Home or any other transient merchant propose to bond and not engage in any deceptive, you know, whether it be bait and switch or high-pressure sales, or not complying with the Consumer Protection Act's notices that are, that must be delivered to a potential buyer at the time that the contract is entered into. So we had received information and complaints from three citizens, two by email, another by telephone, and there was actually a fourth by telephone, but I don't know the name of that woman who had contacted our office by telephone. And so when those come in, we ask them what the, what the allegations are, and then based on that, the city manager has the discretion to say that there is going to be a revocation, and if a person wants just to dispute that pursuant to paragraph C of that same section, 8-427, "The license shall stand denied or revoked unless within five days after the denial or receipt of the notice of revocation from the city manager, the license holder asks for an appeal." And that's what happened in this case. So we sent the letter certified mail. I believe the council that is here tonight was out of town, so one of his associates contacted me via email and possibly the city clerk by email as well. We set a hearing date, and then that's, that's what brings us here tonight.
So in that explanation, we, one of the, one of the criteria was the bonding aspect?
No, it's not the bond. They have the bond, but what I'm saying is that with regard to the city code, the city code portion of the violation would be that you not engage in any either deceptive practices or any practices that would be in violation of the state law, so...
So, okay, let's, I want to stop right there. So is that the crux of what we're alleging then? Is that there are deceptive sales tactics going on?
That was the allegation that was made by the citizens. That is correct, and that they were also not given proper notice of the right to cancel, which is required, and which is, and that is what I felt made the Attorney General's complaint relevant because that is an allegation that has been going on. There is an agreed, there is a memorandum of agreement from 2012 with American Dream Home where they agreed to voluntarily, after being notified by the Attorney General of Complaints, to comply, and now there's a lawsuit that was filed in the fall of 2017 because there's an allegation, and their counsel is correct, there's an allegation that they did not comply with that agreement from 2012, and so the Attorney General is now going forward as of the fall of 2017, saying that they have violated the Consumer Protection Act in various ways. A second allegation, and that is, that's, that's the city code portion. I can move on to the state law portion of two, if you would like me to.
No, I, I'm, thank you, Dave. That's sufficient.
Okay. So the, the second is for any violation of any city or state law regulating the sales activities of the license holder. And so basically, you have to have the cancellation notice that is provided that tells an individual, and it's actually a separate document that is signed by that individual, saying, I realize that you've given me a copy of that. If the work is for more than $1,000, they also have to be provided with another notification that says, I have received a pamphlet about my rights as a consumer in a situation where there's more than $1,000 worth of work that's going to be done. Finally, and I don't have any evidence of this in this particular case, although one of the complainants alleged that, in essence, the American Dream Home representative was acting as a unlicensed insurance adjuster. That is one of the complaints with regard to the Attorney General's allegations, where you have to have a license in order to actually go and try to adjust a claim. And I'm sure that they have, I'm sure their opinion is, no, we give an estimate, and we provided that to the adjuster, and we cooperate with them, and there's always a fine line there. Is it cooperating and assisting, or are they acting as an unlicensed adjuster? If we have witnesses here to talk about their experience, we do. If we don't, I have no, you know, I'm not sure if the complaining parties are here or not. We mailed them notice, and I telephoned them on several occasions. We have one back here in the back, yes.
Go ahead. Are you back?
Yeah. I can move on to the state law portion of two, if you would like me to.
No, I, I, I'm, thank you, Dave, that's sufficient.
Okay. So the, the second is for any violation of any city or state law regulating the sales activities of the license holder. And so basically, you have to have the cancellation notice that is provided that tells an individual, and it's actually a separate document that is signed by that individual, saying, "I realize that you've given me a copy of that. If, if the work is for more than a thousand dollars, they also have to be provided with another notification that says, 'I have received a pamphlet about my rights as a consumer in a situation where there's more than a thousand dollars' worth of work that's going to be done.'" Finally, and I don't have any evidence of this in this particular case, although one of the complainants alleged that, in essence, the American Dream Home representative was acting as a unlicensed insurance adjuster. That is one of the complaints with regard to the Attorney General's allegations, where you have to have a license in order to actually go and try to adjust a claim. And I'm sure that they have, I'm sure their opinion is, no, we give an estimate, and we provided that to the adjuster, and we cooperate with them, and there's always a fine line there. Is, is it cooperating and assisting, or are they acting as an unlicensed adjuster? If we have witnesses here to talk about their experience, we do. If we don't, I have no, you know, I'm not sure if the complaining parties are here or not. We mailed them notice, and I telephoned them on several occasions.
One of them's back here.
We have one back here in the back, yes.
Are you back?
You'll have an opportunity to, to-
Okay. No, I was just, I was wondering.
So, so I think it might be relevant to inquire whether those notices were given and what process was used to contact the insurance company. I think that that would be something that council would be interested in hearing from the witness.
So we haven't proven any of this, is that what I'm hearing?
No, these are just allegations. They have the right to appeal. This is, and then we have a gentleman here who is one of the citizens here who's gonna speak his piece as well, but with regard to council asking questions, I think those would be the relevant questions that council may wish to have her-
Can you answer those questions? Are you able to answer those questions?
Um, which, can I ask you which questions?
Sure. Uh, first off, with regard to the notice of cancellation, that the requirement that a potential customer be given a notice of cancellation, and they sign an acknowledgement of having received that form, I don't know if that was done in these-
Yeah, both, everyone is required to sign a acknowledgement of their home repair consumer rights, and I've marked American Dream Home exhibit number one, where Mr. Bill Collier signed off on the date that the estimate was provided, that he in fact was provided the pamphlet, and he was aware of his rights. Unfortunately, because Mr. Maher canceled, Keith Maher canceled his so quickly, there was no paperwork that was generated or kept. So all I have is the, the form, and I can provide that to the panel, the council, to show that in fact the law was followed, and they do get the pamphlet, and they do sign off.
And in that pamphlet, it talks about termination?
It talks about their legal rights in terms of cancellation. And again, I'd just like to point out that the city's own exhibits, exhibit number five, which is the agreement that we're talking about, specifically sets forth, on the back, that they are permitted to cancel this contract before midnight on the earlier of the fifth business day, if you've received written notification from your insurance company, or thirty days after you've signed your proof of loss. So to say that they're, they're not provided a cancellation notice when this document is given to them and they sign off on it, and they get the state-approved pamphlet setting forth their rights, is completely in compliance with the law. So I guess I'm still waiting to hear how my, my client didn't comply with the law.
Sure. Well, and, and so in that regard, as you're aware, you have to have, the notice is, in my reading of it, is it's a separate notice that's in ten-point bold print, and I don't think, I don't think, I've not seen any separate notice in ten-point bold print, but you may have something that I haven't seen. And so if that's the case, that, that is possible. Also, with regard to the, the pamphlet, it sounds like you have proof of an exhibit that shows that he wasn't-
I do.
He acknowledged receipt, or-
I do.
Do you have the ten-point?
Yes, sir.
Deal, that he signed? Do we have him with us?
Oh, the entire pamphlet? No, we have the signature part of the consumer pamphlet that's kept in our files.
And do you know if the, is the only notice of, is the only notice of cancellation on the backside of-
No, there's a, there's a separate kind, there's a second consumer rights pamphlet that has a specific section for the homeowner to sign, saying they acknowledge the receipt of it, and the copy of that signature is what we have here today.
Right. And then that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But you don't have the actual pamphlet, though, tonight, is that correct?
No, we do not. It's with the homeowner, and it's kind of like cut off. There's a scissor mark thing on it for them to give that to us, saying that we gave it to the family.
And then finally, I think the final allegation that I had heard or was aware of was that, was an allegation of how the facilitation between American Dream Home happens with regard to making a claim with the insurance company, because that is also something that has allegedly been a continuing problem with American Dream Home acting as an unlicensed adjuster. And you may disagree with what I'm saying, I understand that, but-
It's not that I-
That's one of the complaints that has, has been lodged by our citizens, and we have to take that very seriously.
And I would just, being familiar with the complaint that was filed in Cook County, and having read it, it sounds like council's read it, and he's basically setting forth all of the complaints that were made up in Cook County and somehow bootstrapping it into this case.
No, that, that's a complete misrepresentation, sir. I was contacted by citizens who made specific complaints regarding this. They contacted the clerk's office, and the gentleman can address those when he comes here.
I, I have a question. So is it different, I've bought two roofs in my house through my insurance company over the twenty-seven years I've lived there. And I've hired local contractors, but I understand how I may not have known when exactly the damage had, the windstorm happened to my house. And I don't, in two transactions in twenty-seven years, because roofs don't go bad that often, but they've had, I don't ever remember a local contractor giving me a document. So is it different rules for transient contractors than it is for local contractors, as far as describing bailouts or whatever? Because-
Sure.
The first contractor I, let me continue. The first contractor I hired to replace a roof, not under insurance, I signed up, and three months later, I still don't have a roof, and I had no pressure to get him to, to do it. I mean, he had me under a contract, but I didn't have anything on him, but I mean, and he was a local contractor, so it's, I guess my question is, are these gentlemen under different rules or regulations than a guy that has a building here?
If you, yes, a person who does not have a permanent structure located here is treated differently. That's what the transient merchant license is all about. They're treated very similarly to somebody who would want to sell you encyclopedias, or anybody who want to sell you pots and pans, or any other, it's whether it's services or goods.
Okay.
And this is specifically included in that, that ordinance, yes, so they are treated differently.
Well, I, I just, I disagree. Any contractor that comes and replaces your roof has to comply with the state of Illinois code.
Absolutely, shouldn't leave.
So I, what you're talking about is the, in order to get the transient, transient license and keep it, you have to follow all Illinois state laws.
Right.
So we're kind of talking about apples and oranges here. Any contractor, answer your question, any contractor that comes and replaces your roof has to comply with the statutes regarding that, doing that work, including providing the pamphlet and giving a cancellation policy and making it clear. It's not just transient people who are, don't have a permanent structure in the, in the-
Okay.
But they're not, they're not subject to having a license revoked like you are at the transient merchant. The reason why we're here is a revocation of a, and so that is, that's the difference.
I know, I, I understand. I thought his question was to the-
Well, I'm not, I, I understand the revocation of a license compared, but I'm trying to get to whether or not there really was, and there'll be other testimony coming up, and, uh, okay.
Sure. And, and the license, and the other question that you had with regard to your, the person that you dealt, the two people that you dealt with, yeah, they certainly could not act as an insurance adjuster, it's pretty clear that-
But see, and I don't understand that terminology. Insurance companies, I mean, their whole goal is don't pay the claim. I mean, I'm sorry, that's just the way they are. But, so, these men, I mean, and I, and I just know through the body business, but the, the adjuster, the insurance company or agent hires the adjusters out. I mean, to think that these men would be anything, but they would be in, in favor of the homeowner, the insured, is what their job would be, to be able to get the best in the insurance company is to pay the least amount? They can't. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the, the-
But it requires a license to be able to do the adjuster.
Sure, but the insurance company would pay the adjuster. I mean, these men wouldn't be getting paid from the insurance company.
It depends on, and I don't, you're gonna have to determine what the facts are. What I'm saying is that-
Well, you said, you brought it up, sir.
Yeah, I did, because I did.
You said unlicensed, you were calling these people unlicensed adjusters, and now, and I heard that, and I wrote it down.
Absolutely.
You said unlike, and for them to be an unlicensed adjuster, that means they would be adjusting the claim for-
Right.
Tell, you tell me what you're thinking.
Sure. Well, I was contacted by a citizen who said that they had, and this was just the allegation, and that's, and that's by one of the citizens that called, that American Dream Home had been attempting to negotiate a settlement directly with the insurance company without their consent. That's what I was told. So it is not, you cannot do that if you are, and you can't assign that right to someone who's not licensed. I don't know if that's true, I don't know if that's not true, but you don't have the right, I don't have the right to make a claim for your car unless I'm either a licensed adjuster.
I see, I understand that, that whole, that whole thing.
So I don't know if that was, then that was-
But I think I misunderstood the word adjuster, then, because if they're trying to, to get the insurance company to pay a claim because of whatever, then that's, I understand.
Do we have any other further questions of these two gentlemen at this point?
Mayor, I would just like to know, how many, how many projects have you guys, has your company done in Rock Island?
Since 2014, it has been hundreds.
Hundreds? Do you have a specific count?
I, I don't specifically, on me, this year it has been around thirty, I think last year was around fifty. 2014 was a busy year for roofing in this specific area, and that number's likely between a hundred and fifty and three hundred for the 2014 to 2015 period.
And do you work in just Illinois?
No, we work in, we have, we're in fifteen different, fifteen different states, we have twenty-eight different locations. Our headquarters and corporate office is in Illinois, and our Iowa office is just over the way in Davenport.
Is the, is the salesperson or yourself commission-based?
Yes, sir.
So there is some incentive on your side to continue to find more jobs?
Yes, sir. And I-
Yeah, but that, that is, I mean, that's true for car salesmen, anyone.
Sure.
I, I just want to understand in terms of like, City of Moline, do you work in City of Moline?
Not currently, no.
Is there a reason why?
There's a reason why the, in 2014 and 2015 time period with inspections that we had had with the City of Moline, we were told we were no longer allowed to work there, and we left about, I think, to my recollection, a hundred and eighteen projects that we were not permitted to build.
And what about the City of Davenport?
They're only on the Illinois side, aren't they?
No, they're headquartered in-
They're headquartered in Davenport.
To my knowledge, everything is fine in Davenport, to my knowledge, but I haven't checked and looked recently.
Do you have a number of communities that, do you know a number of communities that you are not allowed to do work in?
There is currently, this is, in terms of a transient merchant license or in terms of a, a building permit license?
Anything that you've been denied or-
Yes, to, to my knowledge, right now, there is, transient merchant license in Rock Island, to my knowledge, right now is currently the only one. Yes, we've completed roughly twenty-five thousand projects in the state of Illinois since the 2012 assurance of voluntary compliance that was mentioned with-
You are, you are, I hate to use the word banned or whatever, how many cities in the state of Illinois?
I do not know if there's currently any bans from, in the state of Illinois.
Well, in Cook County, in Cook County, Moline you are, you just said you were Moline you were.
Moline we are, yes. That hasn't been the, we, we don't work at all in Moline, Illinois.
How about, I don't, Cook County, what county was the one that there's under?
Are you, are you able to legally work in Cook County?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What county was that in, Dave?
There was DuPage, Cook, there's Peoria, I'm not sure which county Peoria is, and there are lists, I mean, I can, I have that available if you'd like, there are-
You're still doing business in those cities?
Excuse me, you have a list of places where they can't work?
No, no, this is a list of places where there are alleged violations. There, there, there's a difference between alleged violations, these were the alleged violations from the state attorney, or I'm sorry, from the Attorney General.
The addresses, the counties from the Illinois Attorney General complaint, is that what you're referencing?
Correct.
I think that, that's Cook, DuPage, McHenry, and Lake, to my recollection.
Counties, not cities, but counties.
Yes, that's where, I believe, the nine homeowners mentioned in the complaint were.
So with respect to Moline, the inspectors just didn't approve, what was the issue with the inspectors in Moline?
That, the time period they were talking about in Moline, there was a lot of work, and we had opened up our office, and when we opened up our office for the first time, we, we did very well with the amount of work there was to do. There was issues with scheduling. The one thing, to my knowledge, we were at one point paying the overtime, paying additional money to receive our inspections for overtime. Employees paid to the inspections to do it, and the end result of, I think roughly forty to seventy-five jobs after getting them inspections, it, we weren't allowed to continue their relationship or continue to pull a building permit.
You don't know why?
Sir, you were part of, you were part of a joint meeting back in around September of 2015, I was there, I think you were there, and maybe your counsel was there, is that correct?
I do not believe so, sir, no.
Okay. Do you recall there being a problem with calling for timely inspections with the City of Rock Island? In other words, having a backlog and calling for twenty or thirty inspections at, at one time? Do you recall an agreement involving the city in that regard?
I recall, but I, I wasn't at the time currently involved in the situation.
Okay, you weren't involved in that conference call?
In 2015.
September of 2015.
I highly doubt it, my position at that time, that I can, I could likely look back at my calendar if maybe another name of one of our employees was involved, it might ring a bell, I'm sorry, I don't recall.
Do you recall there being a problem with the, too many failing inspections, and the City of Moline said, "Listen, you've got guys on roofs that we don't think are qualified, and we're having too many failing inspections, and that's why they said you can't work there anymore." Is that your understanding?
Inspections were, inspections were an issue, and me personally, I was not involved in the Moline situation at that time. My position, American Dream, didn't directly involve me in that.
Okay. But it's the same American Dream Home that we're talking about here today, correct?
Yes, sir.
Fine. And it was because they were failing inspections and not passing city code, they said, "You can't work here anymore," correct?
Again, sir, I wasn't involved at that point in the time, so I know inspections were a problem, but that was an issue, but I personally wasn't involved in it, so I can't answer that question.
So would that have been from the independent contractors you hired, or would it have been by building crews that were employed by American Dream Homes?
We use, we use subcontractors to do our work. Every one of our subcontractors is also fully insured and bonded, and also, per state law, has an Illinois state roofing license.
Thank you. So you guys sell the work, and then you sell it out to subcontractors?
Yes, sir.
Makes perfect sense.
Mayberry, did you have a question?
I wanted to know, the attorney, what law office do you work out of?
I've got an office in Springfield and an office in Chicago.
And what's the name of your law firm?
Nell O'Connor-Daniewicz, I'm the John O'Connor of it.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any, for the questions at this point? All right. If you don't mind, the-
One thing, I think I might be able to point some clarification on the public adjusting question, discussion, that was earlier. In our dealings with the Illinois Attorney General, we have, in terms of the compliance that we've enforced in 2018 with the wording on our contract, with what we're doing in terms of public adjusting, and us meeting the insurance company out there, is the insurance company sets the price for what they approve, and we are talking about the damage and the scope of work that would take to restore the damage. The pricing is something that is set by the insurance company, and there's very strict policy in place, including the 2018 Salesman Code of Ethics that every single one of our salesmen signs to, that we are not to advise the homeowner on the pricing, on anything that has to do with their policy, and direct them to their insurance company or their insurance agent to do so.
I have one question.
Yes. Sorry, my mic wasn't on. You mentioned that you subcontract your roofing jobs out, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
For this area, specifically Rock Island, but could include the surrounding cities, where do you find those subcontractors?
We have a crew recruiting department that specifically finds the contractors, along with the industrial relations department that confirms the insurance, and every single week before, they're paid and monthly checks for every crew that works in the state of Illinois to ensure that their Illinois roofing license is valid. So a lot of them still work for us, and we continuously have a recruiting department for crews that contact this area to work, to hire them.
So are they both local and non-local crews, then?
They're, they're local crew. We hire to do crews in Illinois. If a crew is traveling from a long distance to another, that's something that we make sure that it's not done for any sort of permanence. It would be on a need basis to do a handful of jobs if need be, if it worked out, but our crews generally are from the area that they work in, they're not coming from Texas, they're, they're Illinois roofers and have an Illinois state roofing license.
Thank you.
Question regarding the inspections, and this is just me not being familiar with the process, but, so you, you sub out the actual work, does your organization take responsibility to take care of the timeliness of the inspections, or do you have the subcontractors do that?
That is someone that, it, it's, it's, works together. Depending, I know in Rock Island, the signature on the permit and the posting of the permit Depending, I know in Rock Island, the signature on the permit and the posting of the permit is something that our employees take care of. And any sort of registration that is needed sometimes by the subcontractor as well as the general contractor is taken care of by our crews and all outlined in the agreement that we have with them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'd like to move to the next step and I, I would like to ask anybody in favor of this issue to come forth. Is there anybody in favor? Is anyone in favor of the revocation of HDHI's license, anybody in favor?
You gentlemen, may be seated for a minute.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Collier, I believe, is that correct?
Okay, is he in favor or opposed?
In favor of revocation or-
In favor of revocation.
Of revocation or in favor of rescinding the revocation?
In this case, it's in favor of revocation.
That, that would be you, sir, I think.
Come on up.
Could you please sign that sheet first and then state your name?
I'll give you a pen, sir.
I took the pen.
That's all right.
State your name for the record, sir.
Uh, Bill Collier.
Okay, you want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Go ahead. All right, when, uh, the salesman came around to my house, he, um, told me that I got roof damage, I got siding damage, need new gutters and all that stuff. And he wrote out this paper, ten thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars for roof estimate, twelve, uh, twelve hundred and ninety-four dollars for gutters and nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars, uh, for siding. And it came to like, uh, thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. When, uh, the insurance adjuster came out, he says, I don't need no gutters or sightings. And he went up on the roof and he gave, uh, estimate of seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. That's including my thousand dollar deductible. So, that's a long way from this, so. And then on this, I asked the guy about this paper about the fifth business day and he says, don't even worry about that, that's not even binding, it's not a binding contract, you know? So, I don't know, we're, we're, um, they're getting all this and, and everything, but I've been waiting since June to get my roof done. And I was afraid I was going to be putting a lawsuit or something like that if I got it done by somebody else. So, yeah, I'm in favor of, uh-
Revoking their-
Revoking their license, yep.
So that, the original dollars, the salesperson gave you those do- that dollar amounts?
Yes, he totaled all this out.
Okay, so they estimated and pla- estimated how much or did an appraisal on how much it would cost?
The whole price of the gutters roof, and it, it was like thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents.
And so you in turn had somebody else do it, you did not deal with them at all anymore? And you had another roofer take care of it?
I haven't had it done yet.
You haven't had it done yet?
Right.
Okay, have you gotten any other pricing from anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I got a price of six thousand seven hundred and, uh, besides my deductible. And I got one with my deductible, so we're about the same price.
Yeah, sure.
Sir, did you, so did you sign a final contract then? Or did you sign a, an estimate to proceed in a process? I'm just curious of what, what did you sign off on in, in, in your dealings with?
Uh, he had some papers and he had me sign, had me sign these, this paper, this paper, and I think there's one more paper.
And so, sir, I just were to help clarify things. I believe that what he's probably referring to, and I'll bring them out, sir, so you can take a look at them, I believe, are probably Exhibits Four and Exhibit Six, which I think have your name on them. I'll have you take a look to make sure I'm not misspeaking, because I wasn't there when you signed these. You might say these are my signatures, or you might say they're not, they're not.
I can take a look, uh, first, um, at Exhibit Six, and it looks like that's dated, uh, June twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Is that the first document that you were talking to? You've got about, you've got a copy in your folder here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, a big one, right?
And although yours is on a legal-sized page, this one has been shrunk down to fit on an eight and a half by eleven, is that correct?
Right.
All right, and the second document that has a later date, which is June twenty-first, the following day, it looks like-
Next day.
Does that have your signature on it?
I don't, there, right there, yep.
Okay, on the back of, of Exhibit Four is your signature, is that correct?
Right.
All right, so is there a-
Same as on-
Third document that you believe that you signed, sir?
Uh, no.
So those, Exhibits Four and Exhibit Six, those are the two that you signed?
Yeah, I signed that and he signed it.
I got in order to go. You've got the videos, sir, is that right?
Yes.
And those are the same as what we've got in Four and Six, it's just that these are on a smaller piece of paper.
Right, right.
So, sir, when you, um, you signed these, these documents here, um, but then, then afterwards you had wanted to cancel your services and cancel your, your dealings?
Yeah, 'cause when the insurance, insurance adjuster came out, he says, I didn't need all that stuff, so-
Sure.
Right.
And so, uh, when you called to cancel,
Yep.
were, were you given roadblocks to that or was, was the cancellation?
Well, I saw the salesman on the street at another house.
Okay.
And I called, 'cause he gave me his number, I called him and told him I want to cancel. And he went on and on, wanted to know why and all that stuff and-
Sure.
So I finally told him that and then, and then about a week later, a guy named Tim called me. Is that you or, well, it's from, uh, he said he's from American Dream Home and he heard I wanted to cancel my contract. You know, I, uh, started to say, tell him something, but I just, I hung up the phone on him. So that's what I did.
Well, I certainly understand how you'd be concerned about that. And it, and it, and it's, it sounds like a communication issue, because, you know, I've, I can also see an insurance company saying, well, you don't need gutters and siding because we don't think it, you had the damage. But, you know, it, it, but there are other, other investigators that, that I would encourage you to hire and I'll try to find some names for you to make sure that, that your insurance company didn't misrepresent. These folks may be right, you may have had the damage and your insurance company might not want to pay the extra twenty-four thousand dollars in the damage, whatever kind of damage, and maybe there was, maybe there wasn't, but that's what your agent should be telling you and showing you. Somebody should be able to explain to you whether you had the damage or not and, uh, just for your own protection there. Because if you got the, I've seen hail damage and it just beat up the sides of houses, usually not all four, but sides of the house. Usually it's two sides of the house, but to try to help you out there, but, uh, it sounds to me like it's a communication issue with-
When he was writing up the, the thing here, we were walking around the house, there wasn't a dent in the house nowhere on the siding.
Oh, okay, all right.
I told him, that, there ain't no dent up there, I ain't going to get no new siding or gutters.
Okay.
Oh, we'll, we'll, we'll pass it, we get him to pass it and everything like that, so.
Okay.
And he came, he just said, a roof on the house and a roof on the garage.
Okay. Just curious, would you have known there was hail damage or storm damage on your roof and garage if they hadn't showed up? Would you have known it?
Well, yeah, I was always walking around my house, house next door, I can see dents in that house.
Okay, but you didn't call these guys, they just happened to show up right after the storm then?
I was out in the backyard barbecuing one day.
Uh-huh.
And it started sprinkling, then I heard somebody say, hey. I looked over there, there he was, walking up my driveway in the back of the house.
Okay.
Yeah, and he says, he had this folder like this in his hand and everything, yeah, so. We went in the garage and talked about it and then it started pouring down rain.
Sure.
So, um, and, uh, yeah. So and then he, um, came back the next day, had me sign this paper one day, came back the next day with another paper. And I asked him, what's this paper for, you know, so, is it binding too? He says, no, it's, none of this is binding, so.
Okay.
Right.
So you, you haven't paid him any cash yet?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collier.
Yep.
Mr. Collier, is that all of the documents that you were given from American Home Dream? Is, is that all of them that you brought with?
Yes.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, according to state law, they're required to give a separate document with a ten-point font and all that good stuff explicitly laying out your rights to cancel, uh, the agreement within five days or something like that? Did you receive a separate document laying out how to cancel other?
Says on the back of one of these.
Not on the back, a separate document?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thought you said that he came back another day and had you sign something else.
That's that.
He gave me one paper one day.
Yeah.
And then gave me to come back with this paper the next day.
Is that two separate papers or, I mean, is that, meaning is it-
One is for, one is for, uh, what color shingles I wanted for the roof.
Okay, I see.
And what color siding I wanted and all that, you know, so, but. He was still persistent on trying to get me siding and everything, so, but, didn't work.
Mr. Collier, did you receive a, uh, brochure about your rights as a consumer or, or anything like that? Pamphlet that spelled out what your rights were as a consumer, whether you could cancel, other than those documents right there?
Uh, no, I got this folder here.
Yeah.
And it doesn't say anything about canceling.
Okay. State laws, as, as I understand, state law explicitly states that they must provide you a consumer rights brochure? Is that what it's called? Consumer rights brochure on a separate document, certain specifications, not on the backside of a contract. So, or, or a, whatever this is called, a non-binding contract. So, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Any other, no other questions, okay. Is there anybody here that would speak, that anyone want against the re- revocation, revocation? Anyone want to speak against the revocation? See, none. Okay, once again, any final people out there that want to speak for or against the revocation? Anybody for or against, anybody else? Okay? Any closing arguments or issues?
Thank you for hearing us tonight, I just want to address a couple of issues. The document that had been marked here, uh, specifically, the first, uh, Exhibit Six is the estimate. Mr. Collier said that he was told that that wasn't a binding contract because it's not a binding contract. And it says it right on the document. This is the first visit by the salesman and it simply says, inspection and damage report, not a binding contract. Uh, it allows them the authority to conduct the inspection and it spells out, uh, that the insurance adjuster will come out to the house and determine whether the, they agree with the estimate and that the damage to the house was caused by, uh, weather-related storm. Um, in this case, Mr. Collier's damage, uh, came back with siding and the roof. He indicating that his neighbor's, uh, house appeared to be damaged by the storm. Uh, his next, I guess, the next issue he had was that, um, uh, he didn't ag- he, the fact that the insurance company didn't agree with the estimate that American Dream Home ca- came up with. Um, and this happens all the time. Uh, the insurance adjuster's not always going to agree with it, the exact damage that might be seen by the adjuster or by the American Dream Home salesperson. And the document he signed off on is the contract where he acknowledges that. I thought coming in today's, tonight's hearing, it was all going to be about regarding, uh, he wasn't allowed to cancel. Uh, that's what I was led to believe, uh, but I didn't hear that. Uh, instead, I heard he talked to the salesman on the street and then someone called him from American Dream Home, uh, the name of Tim, and then he hung up on him. And then he never had the work done and no, there's no high-pressure tactic to come in and do this work. So it really boils down to, one, uh, he said there was no agreement and that's true, the first document's an estimate. And two, the adjuster and the American Dream Home numbers didn't jive and that sometimes happen, happens. But there was no testimony or evidence before the panel that this resident wasn't allowed to cancel the agreement. So really, all I've heard about is a lawsuit that's pending in Cook County, an allegation from the lawsuit in Cook County, but no testimony before the panel that somehow American Dream Home violated the, the laws of this, of this city or the state of Illinois. So I point the panel back to the city code, which says the city manager may revoke any license for any of the following causes. For any violation of provisions of this article or any violation of any state or city law regulating the sale activities of the license holder. Again, I haven't heard any testimony today or evidence brought to the panel's attention that my client violated any code set forth by the city or any state law. Uh, the document, um, regarding, uh, the home repair, know your consumer rights, uh, Mr. Collier didn't remember having it, uh, we didn't really hear that, whether he brought everything with him. But, um, I'd like to present to the panel, American Dream Home Exhibit Number One, which if you look at the signature on it, Bill Collier, it's the same signature found on Exhibit Four and Exhibit Six, which is the documents he admitted signing. So here's a document he's, he signed off on, indicating he was given the pamphlet. There's no evidence that the pamphlet doesn't comply with state law. I think what we have is just maybe a resident that wasn't happy with the way things turned out because of the numbers and, and a complaint was lodged, lodged. And everything else we've heard from the city's council is all hearsay and rumor. So with all due respect, my client has been doing business for four years in this city. They've done, was according to, to Mr. Kramer, probably sixty, you know, uh, roofs at least. And we have one isolated resident come in and complain. Uh, he told you about Moline and it sounded like he was pretty honest, they just grew too fast and they had problems with Moline. But I, I think that they don't have those problems today, uh, we're not seeing those issues today. And I ask that you consider to rescind the revocation and allow my client to have their license back.
Thank you.
Point of order, uh, if the license is revoked, is there a process spelled out to have them reapply in a number of years? How does that process work within our code?
Well, there is, there are two different issues there. One would be, um, if there was a revocation and they were to disagree with it, they would have the right to have administrative review based on the record that was presented here tonight. So they could go across, within thirty-five days of today's date, go across the street over to the district court to appeal that. If that were not done and say thirty-six days goes by, um, I don't see anything in our code. I had to not find anything under the Transient Merchant Act that says that they could not reapply tomorrow or a week after tomorrow. I don't see any prohibition in the code as it is currently written. I'm not sure when it was written or who wrote it, but I don't see any prohibition in our current code that would say they couldn't come in and make an application tomorrow.
Okay.
I still think it's a communication problem. Mr. Collier, I don't think you are under contract with these folks anymore. I think you can get a hold of your insurance company and you can have whoever, the way I interpret what you guys are saying. But I mean, perhaps not hanging up on them, you know, a little bit more communication on your part. I'm not judging, I'm just saying that, and communication's tough, it is, you get emotional about stuff you don't know. Somebody's trying to oversell you something, but the insurance company said you didn't have it coming. Uh, I, I under- I've been around the block enough, seen those kind of things happen, but, uh, it, uh, you, it appears to me that, sir, you are not under contract with these folks. You can go ahead and move on with your life and, uh, and get a hold of another roofing company or whatever. Just have these folks do the roof, I mean, or whoever you can get to do it for the best amount, so. They wanted to make sure you knew that before we get done here tonight.
Yeah, question, uh, Randy, you're the one that revoked this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, could you give us your insight? You're the one that did this, you did all the legwork or had staff do it, you know, uh, I would like to hear your opinion.
Yeah, well, initially you brought it to my attention.
Right.
So you called to ask if they had a transient merchant license because you- So you called to ask if they had a transient merchant license because you'd been receiving complaints from your citizens in your ward about high-pressure business tactics. I then went to the city clerk and asked if they had a license, and she said yes, and boy, we're getting some complaints, not just from Rock Island, I think you got some from Davenport. Then I talked to the city attorney, and again, it's all high-pressure business tactics. And I did notify your agency to Arissa Taguchi, so she was aware of what the issues were. On July twenty-third, I notified her.
She's the associate from the law firm. She was, I believe, she indicated that her supervising person, which I believe was probably you, her supervising partner was on vacation, and so she contacted us on the fifth day, and that's who he's referring to.
Well, right, but that's all after the revocation had already occurred. I, I thought there was suggestion that somehow we were contacted and said, "We're getting some complaints, can we have a sit-down and talk with you and try to work this out?" This was after the revocation already occurred.
For certain, that is true.
Yeah, we're just clearing up what you said earlier tonight, that you didn't know until this very night what the issues were.
All I had was the letter that said it's revoked because it violated the code or the state laws, that's it. There was no.
Right, I'm saying it was spelled out in an email to this Arissa. So, anyway.
Okay.
I just wanted to make that clear, so I did, I did notify you. I talked to the city attorney then, and he mentioned that there were similar complaints against American Dream Home a few years back in Rock Island that was settled through a meeting. And so when we have an alderman complain to me about constituents are contacting him, the city clerk has been contacted by a number of people, and we've had this similar issue in the past, and that's what led me to revoke the license. And then this is part of the process, so now you get your public hearing and to be able to tell your side of the story.
And I, we appreciate that. I guess, in a perfect world, I would like to sit, be able to have a, sit down face-to-face, and we have three employees that actually have the transient merchant license, and bring those employees in and sit down with them and tell them what is being said, and so that they could understand it, and we could understand it as well before tonight.
Yeah, I guess that had been done previously.
That was.
A few years ago, and since that had been done once, and now we have the same issues, I thought this was the best course of action. And again, you still do have the license, it has not been revoked yet because pending the appeal, you're still allowed to operate.
I would like to make a few more comments. Alderman Tulloneer, I think there may be some confusion, or there obviously is some confusion on the definition of contract here, but, so the consumer signs two documents, or at least Mr. Collier here, one of our residents signed two documents. One is the inspection and damage report, exhibit six, from our counsel. That does explicitly say, "Not a binding contract" on the top of it. However, the following day, a representative from American Dream Home came back to Mr. Collier's residence, and Mr. Collier signed Exhibit Four from our legal counsel, which at the very bottom of this document, it reads, "Customer acknowledges that they have read and understand the terms of this contract as set forth on this page and the reverse side." I mean, that, to me, that seems like a contract. Now, the reason I bring that up is because in this Illinois state statute, Illinois compiled statute 513-18, it explicitly says, "When the consumer has entered into a written contract for home repair and remodeling services with respondents, where respondents are to be paid from the proceeds of a property and casualty insurance policy, such contact, contract, I think, is that that supposed to say? Such contracts shall contain the following, quote, 'notice of cancellation' in duplicate and easily detachable form, which shall contain the boldface type of minimum size of ten points and contain the following language." So as I read this, this form that Mr. Collier signed is not easily detached, I mean, the, you can see the exhibit if you would like, but the part in here where it says that you have the right to cancel within fifth business day is not easily detachable. It's not a, you know, snip here, like the other document you're referencing, and it is not in duplicate. Or, well, I guess there was, he had the carbon copy, correct?
He has a carbon copy, and then it also should be.
What about the one that he signed, that he acknowledged he received that pamphlet? Am I missing?
Well, that was the consumer's right to know pamphlet. They gotta have that, and they gotta have an easily detachable.
They show that he signed that.
Okay, so he.
The know your rights.
I think there's a brochure, there's a brochure and a notice of cancellation. They are two separate things. One is a brochure, kind of like when you buy a house, and they give you a lead-based paint disclosure, and it says, "I've been advised, the lead-based paint, don't eat it, it's bad for your children," and those kinds of things.
Right.
So it's a separate little, it's a pamphlet. I'm sorry. It's a. Separate pamphlet. The other is the requirement for a notice of cancellation, which the alderman was, which Alderman Parker was just referring to, which is a different but related issue, but it's a notice of cancellation, once you have a contract for home repair that's going to be paid for fully or in part by insurance proceeds. So that is a different, the notice of cancellation.
Are we saying he didn't receive that, that piece?
I, I believe that, I, I guess you'd have to recall what his testimony was on that issue, but I don't seem, think we've seen any evidence of a detachable, separate, easily detachable form in duplicate for notice of cancellation that I have heard, but I could be, you know.
Yeah. What we keep in every one of our jobs is, the exhibit that we presented is what is taken off and signature confirmed by the homeowner, and the consumer rights pamphlet, which is the detachable thing, is given to the homeowner, and what we keep track of in our system is the signature confirming that they received the pamphlet, which is the detachable item. So there are three things. I think we're on the same page with what the first two are, and the homeowner, we have, we have the signature that the homeowner says he received, the third, which is the detachable.
My concern is, is I guess I have a tough time, I get viewed as high-pressure sales. I mean, to have a quote given to you as non-binding one day, especially for thirty-some thousand dollars, and the very next day said, "Now, now sign this," which is a binding contract, that after five days of that one, you're, you're bound to it. One day later, to make an evaluation in, one day, that that's what you want to do, and you haven't, you haven't had the insurance adjuster out, out there even at that point yet either. That's what concerns me also, is that high-pressure sales of twenty-four-hour period, to spend thirty-something, commit thirty-some thousand dollars, and without another independent person looking at it. Whether he got that notice or not, or the, the consumer pamphlet, they show that he signed for it, whether he got it or not, but it shows he signed for it. So that's where I guess I'm concerned about. Also, we got to remember that we did have three other complaints, I believe, there was a total of four. One came forth today, and the others did not, but they've been, they've called or emailed or whatever in. And we had an issue several years ago with this type of deal with inspections, and, and had a concern about the, the contract. So this isn't the first time that they've been in front, not in front of this deal, but with the city of Rock Island, had some issues.
Could you, could you gentlemen explain to me, and to the council, and to the public here? I'm, I'm homeowner, I'm the homeowner, okay? So I've come out, I've got hail damage, and the scenario is, is that I actually need my roof replaced. I get a quote that I sign off on, yes, correct?
The first thing that would happen?
Yeah.
Is before any contract, is we would get an inspection.
Sure, okay. So the, the damage is assessed.
That's used to get estimated for the numbers on the contract.
So then, the next step in the process, if I'm still interested in pursuing, is I sign a contract to, a meeting of the minds, to begin a process of you, you know, getting your contractors lined up. So during that time, I think is where I'm most interested in. So I've signed the contract now. Who, who is, who is lining up the assessment with the insurance company? Is that the homeowner or, or American Dream?
You generally get the date and time from the insurance company contacting the homeowner with the date and time of the adjustment.
So when I sign that contract, am I, am I committing? So let's say that the, the total here for the work was fifteen thousand dollars. That was the work estimate, the review, you guys came out. I signed that contract. Is that a contract committing that I am going to be paying you fifteen thousand dollars?
No, it explicitly states on the back of the contract that we're basically going to do it for what the insurance proceeds does it for, and that we will not have the ability to balance the bill. So insurance proceeds and full deductible for the work.
Okay.
And if any, any trade was not listed on the original contract and needed to be added, that had to be produced in writing with a change order, which would also have a price and projected end date.
And that's just so, that's the second bullet point on the back of the contract, which reads, "If you do not cancel the contract, ADHI will only perform the work approved by your insurer, described on the other side of this contract, and will invoice you only the work that is approved. ADH will not seek to hold you liable for costs for work not approved by the insurer, however, you still must pay the deductible." So at no time is the, is the homeowner ever, you know, the thought is they're going to be on the hook for some large amount of money, they didn't realize it when they signed up. That's not the case. It's always going to be the insurance proceeds only, and their deductible, and that's written into the contract.
So, so work, work begins, the insurance company comes back, the estimate was fifteen thousand, insurance company says, "We'll cover twelve." The deductible's four thousand, the homeowner's out four thousand. You guys do the work. A permit is pulled by American Dream Home to begin the work?
Yes, sir. I believe signed by the homeowner.
And signed by the homeowner. So then that, and at that point, the city's involved, inspecting the quality of the work.
Right. Also, just one more, a phone call the week before material would be dropped, it didn't happen in this case, but a phone call would go out to the homeowner a week before the material being dropped, and the material wouldn't end up getting dropped and scheduled until our office has confirmed the approval with the insurance company and received a copy of the insurance company's estimate.
Mm-hmm.
And so if, until we receive a copy of the insurance company's estimate, our job can't go through the system, so those are about three or four things that still would have had to happen for Mr. Collier's job to move forward.
So the, I'm going to go back one step here. So the insurance companies come back and said, "Of this fifteen thousand dollar work, we'll cover twelve." At some point, the homeowner is then notified by American Dream Home of the exchange between the insurance company?
Oftentimes, unless it was already given to at the adjuster appointment, one of our account managers, that's every time the job's turned in to our office to bill, it gets assigned, a specific account manager, and that account manager works for the homeowner, and the insurance company to obtain a copy of the insurance company's estimate. Once that copy of the insurance company's estimate is retained, we have an estimating review department confirm that it is an approval before the job can move forward.
So.
During the communication likely with the account manager, that would have.
Okay. So at this point, that, that communication's happening about the adjustments and ready-to-proceed, we're, we're definitely over five days in this hypothetical situation. We're over, we're over the fifth day of having signed the contract. But it is, explain to me the next timeframe that is spelled out in the contract, the thirtieth day. What is the thirtieth day referring to in the contract here? Because I, I want to fully understand, at this point, my, I guess my final rounding-out question is, you've gone far enough into the process. Is it, at what point is it that the person can't, cannot walk away before work is started?
We have a very specific cancellation process request. And then our CRM, no one wants to cancel. Immediately cancel out the change of terms and involves our original operations coordinators with production to make sure no, no material delivered for the home request, not to do so, also with our quality assurance supervisors who work in-house in the office to make sure it didn't move forward, which was the case with Mr. Collier's job. Once the cancel request was made, it was put on hold very shortly afterwards. The hang-up phone call, the follow-up phone call from one of our inside salesmen to follow-up on jobs that have canceled, and in this case, due to the nature of the call, the job was made inactive in our system. So no one can communicate with them, contract with them, considering the circumstances and anything to move forward. Lots of them, new paperwork and everything would have to be taken care of and bundled up for this job at this stage would be set to move forward.
Okay. And if, when, when someone comes, calls in to cancel, are they given a confirmation/cancellation number, or is there a letter sent? How, how does the consumer fully appreciate and have that security of a cancellation? So that you don't have to sit idly with anxiety?
Sure, no, if, if it was upon request, anything that, lots of times, it's an email from our account manager asking for points of clarification, sometimes even a screenshot of our CRM showing that it was, it is canceled and made inactive, is something that is provided to the homeowner to give them a peace of mind if anyone. Homeowner's canceling is a very serious thing to us, and we make sure specific procedures have been filed and we've approved, improved upon in recent years. So anytime a situation like that happens, we have pretty good transparency from a handful of departments to make sure that, you know, material's dropped and hammers aren't swung against a homeowner's will.
So, and I just want to close sharing my thoughts with the council and the mayor. I, you know, I, I operate in a world professionally where the final decisions may ultimately come down to the decision of an arbitrator. An arbitrator's going to look at the facts of the case and judge it on the merits of the situation. I am not convinced that upholding a revocation at this point is in line with justice. I don't think that we have proven our case beyond reasonable doubt, that there are, in fact, shady practices here. I think it is actually somewhat insulting to disparage a business that, you know, seeks to capitalize in a niche field where damage has generally been done to a property. You come in to offer a service to get people, you know, the, the insurance that they pay for each month. On the other hand, though, I, I feel that through the power we have as a home real community with our ordinances, we should exert greater regulatory control over the contractors that are utilized for this work. I think that that quality and safety and the reputation of the contractors working in this city, in particular on roofs of the homes that are generating property tax revenue, should be of greater concern to us, and we should exercise our authority to do so. And in addition, having a cooperative meeting with these individuals to understand what, if anything, we can do to enhance that line of communication that, to the homeowner, that first of all, the homeowner has to have the responsibility to understand, "This is your home, you got to defend it. You're going to sign something about a service coming in here, you should understand what it is you're doing." But at the very same time, I think we need to have a preponderance of, of resources and detail and information so that they understand you're not on the hook for this until services have been rendered. And I think that needs to be paramount, so that, those are my final thoughts on the situation.
If I might interject just for a moment, I, I wanted to address a couple of things. One is, I, I agree that you're, what is, council should be asked to do and is asked to do is to make a decision based upon the evidence presented at this hearing. There's, there's no doubt that that's what we're talking about. And secondly, with regard, and Josh, I know you're, when you're talking about arbitrations, I know you understand that it's actually preponderance of the evidence, which is more likely than not, as opposed to beyond a reasonable doubt, which would be the.
Sure.
Criminal law definition. So here, we're talking about proof by a preponderance of the evidence, which is fifty-one percent or more, as, as opposed to beyond a reasonable doubt, which is the highest standard we have, and that's for criminal cases. So I just want to make those clarifications.
Okay, you can have a seat if you wish, and.
Thank you.
A little further. Close the public deal, I just want to make sure that everybody understands who or what motion we make. It, it talks about here about reinstating, it's actually whether we want to reinstate the probation, if you want to call probation, or the revocation. So, you know, how it's worded can make a difference, or revoke it. Do we want to revoke it so they cannot do business? Or do we want to have them in a good stand, revocate against the revocation? And am I saying that right, Dave?
I think it would be either a, a motion to rescind the notice of revocation, if you wish to have them continue to operate under their license. So I think it would be a motion to rescind the notice of revocation because it hasn't gone into effect because of the appeal, or on the other hand, to, to uphold the notice of revocation.
So, I just want to make sure we're clear on what the motion.
I just wanted to make, I guess, one statement. In terms of the process, it seems like you have a very, from hearing about it, a good detailed process that you go through. The part that concerns me more than anything is when the homeowner, for whatever reason, decides that they want to cancel, then instead of just canceling, you have another step or two, whatever it is, where some other specialist is going to call them and have to talk to them, and then we have numerous complaints about high pressure, and I think. them, and then we have numerous complaints about high pressure, and I think where there's smoke, there's fire, and I'm concerned about what's happening behind the scenes. I understand you have all these steps you go through, but I'm not comfortable with the number of complaints that apparently we're getting, and there's, there's a problem there somewhere. It might not be highly visible, because I'm not standing right in front of it when it happens, or I can't hear it when, when the transaction takes place, but I'm hesitant to reinstate their, their license based on that, and I don't know about whether we've proved anything, or anybody's proved anything, it's just a gut, a gut feeling that I have.
All right. Another...
Well, yeah, just my closing comment is frankly, state law very plainly spells out exactly the language that you have to do to engage in this type of business activity. And I have not seen any evidence that shows that they have provided our residents with that language, period. So, I mean, our city manager contacted one of the assistants or administrator, I can't remember what the term was used, via email. In my opinion, if you're going to be coming before a public body asking for your license, you might want to bring with the documents that you are legally required to provide people. And so I saw no demonstration that they are providing the notices that they are required by law to give our residents. That's, that's all I have to say.
All right. I hereby close the public meeting and reconvene the regular meeting.
Move to uphold the revocation, notice of revocation for transient merchant license of American Dream Home Improvement.
Second. Moved to second, any discussion?
May I ask the mayor to give us a few words? If you don't want to, that's fine. Of your personal opinion, or guidance, or...
I gave it a little bit earlier, that I, I concerned about the high-pressure sales. I don't want to repeat, I mean, I wasn't, but I have that concern.
I understand.
And then even with that, the times, the time between, not just the one day, but even only five days to cancel, those are big decisions by a lot of homeowners to make, and so I have those concerns of that type of a pressure.
Thank you.
And the persistence, so. All right, we need roll call.
Nay.
You're precise. It's just been going too long.
Alderman Clark.
Nay.
This is the motion to uphold the revocation.
Uphold it.
Yep, nay.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Alderman Talonair.
No.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Alderman Ship.
Nay.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes, three nays, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Item number ten.
Claims, A through D. A, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and four cents to Civil Constructors Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois for the emergency valve replacement and repairs at two hundred twenty-fourth Street. B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa for an emergency water main repair on Forty-Ninth Avenue and Tenth Street. C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents to Valley Construction Company of Rock Island, Illinois for an emergency storm sewer repair at twenty-three sixty-nine, Twenty-seventh Street. And D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-one cents to Miller Trucking and Excavating Company of Silvis, Illinois for an emergency sanitary sewer repair at forty-three oh-three, Twenty-Fourth Street.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items A through D.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Due to the nature of my employment, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number eleven.
Claims for the weeks of August tenth through August sixteenth in the amount of one million, nine hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents, and August seventeenth through August twenty-third in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, eighty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents, and payroll for the weeks of July thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, through August twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of one million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-four cents.
Move to allow the claims and payroll.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twelve.
ACH payments for the month of July in the amount of two million, one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? None, roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirteen.
Purchase card claims for the period from June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, through July twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
Move to approve the purchase card claims. Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fourteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the emergency purchase of a new engine, parts, and labor from Reynolds Ford of East Moline, Illinois, in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
Move to approve the purchases recommended.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion?
I know a good diesel mechanic that could do it for a lot less.
Has he got the time?
No.
There you go. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fifteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the emergency purchase of two sewage lift station pumps from ALL Equipment Incorporated of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Move to approve the purchases recommended.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item sixteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the purchase of a remanufactured Waukesha engine for affluent pump number two, recommending the bid be awarded to Craft Power Corporation of Gaylord, Michigan, in the amount of forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think so. Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the purchase.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item seventeen.
Report from the Parks and Recreation Department regarding bids for the Douglas Park Parking Lot Project, recommending the bid be awarded to Tri-City Asphalt of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of one hundred, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion?
Yeah, is this the same, is Tri-City Asphalt the same as Tri-City Blocktop, or are those two separate companies?
I think it's the same, but I think, I don't know.
I think they're the same.
Blacktop.
Okay.
Tri-City Blacktop, okay.
Thank you. I will be recusing myself from this vote, due to my employment.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item eighteen.
Report from the Parks and Recreation Department regarding bids for the Douglas Park Concession Stand and Press Box Project, recommending the bid be awarded to Midwest Complete Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Don't leave it. Any discussion?
They were the only bidder, is that correct?
Yep.
And this was rebid, correct?
Yes.
Did we have more than one bidder the first go-around? Anybody remember?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Any insight on why only one continued?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item nineteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the fiber optic cable phase eleven intersection cameras project, recommending the bid be awarded to Tri-City Electric Company of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents, subject to change order, subject to a change order to reduce the contract amount to meet the allocated grant amount. Second.
Moved to second, any discussion?
I have a question. This was kind of a convoluted way of doing this whole process, approving the bid for six hundred and eighty-seven thousand plus, but putting in a change order that's going to reduce it to three hundred and twenty-nine thousand and change. So, my, I guess my question is, I understand how we're doing it, I don't know why we're doing it this way, why don't we just approve the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars?
Well, this was, this is what we bid, so you have to vote on what was actually bid. That was the contract that was put out for bid with the specs.
Yeah, I understand.
And that's what everybody bid on, and so that's what you're approving, then we've already talked to them about reducing the amount, as you, as you mentioned.
And, and they're agreeable to that, I take it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Second place. Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request for qualifications for the preparation of the CIDS, Cities HUD, CDBG, five-year consolidated plan, and annual action plan, recommending the contract be awarded to Resource Consultants of Mosher, Oregon, in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm going to move to delay the council decision on this until our next meeting, Monday, September tenth, in order to give council time to read the contract, which we did not get with the packet. It was just handed out to us at the table tonight, unless this was, delaying it would, would cause undue hardship or damage to the people involved, including the city, in which case I would withdraw my motion, but I'd like to hear from staff.
We need a second before we can invite staff to come up.
Yep. Okay.
We need a second first, and then, and then you can ask, then it's open for discussion, so anybody...
If anybody wants to second his motion to delay it. It fails by no second.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to award the contract in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars as recommended and authorize city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple, or maybe just one. So, let me turn on my microphone. So, we do this every five years?
Hire a consultant, you mean?
Well, hire a consultant to put together the five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan.
I don't know that the city has ever hired a consultant to do it in the past. I don't have any knowledge about past actions.
So how was it done in the past, in-house?
I believe it was, probably was.
And so, by having someone hired to do it, what would that be different from in-house and having someone do it out of house?
Well, we have some things that we need to establish, and we need to have a consultant who understands the consolidated plan process to come in, and they're going to assist us. We're going to do the lion's share of the work, but we need assistance, and we need direction. I know HUD like the back of my hand, but I've never written a consolidated plan, and the consolidated plan must, right now, it's too myopic. It's very narrow in the scope of what we can actually do with our HUD money without going out and doing a substantial amendment. So, if you came to us and said, "We want to do this project, but it has to go now," we would not be able to do that, because we would have to go out to public comment, we would have to do that at least twice, we have to have thirty days. You're looking at about a ninety-day process, all right? So, the consultant is going to come in, and they're going to help us craft a consolidated plan that allows us to be able to do whatever we want to do at any time within that five-year period. So, we just need this help coming in. You know, we've cleaned up a great deal, but we still have a lot of work to do, and so to bring this consultant in to help us craft an excellent consolidated plan is really the best approach for us.
Perhaps it would be beneficial if you could just give a brief explanation on what the consolidated plan and annual action plan is, and...
Hang on one minute, please, technical issue.
These are fresh batteries.
I'm going to lose my train of thought, guys.
What size battery?
Well, I, I just put these in last week.
Yeah, but we had a lot of lipping going on in here since six forty-five. And as far as I'm concerned, a lot of it was unnecessary, but it, that's done. But your recorder is letting us know that there was too much of it. Wasting time.
Wasting.
And see, that won't be on the recorder, because it's a battery.
On TV.
Hollywood, right? Spelled A-L-L-E-Y Wood. Alleywood, not Hollywood.
I'm reviewing like the scopes of service.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry.
You gotta be on the recorder.
Oma, man, Oma. I just had the BGA in town talking about this.
We are technically on, on a recorder right now.
Yeah, we are.
How about them Cardinals?
Oh.
Yeah, how about them, them birds?
We may need to use that.
Just punching some buttons.
Let's try this.
Five-minute nap.
She got like, "I don't care about that, man." He said, "Are you a White Sox fan?" I said, "I'm a Cardinals fan."
Still not. Okay.
Is that folder filled up? Maybe you have to go to the head folder, B.
No, I'm going to go to a new folder, but these, I don't know, for some reason, these batteries are not.
Are we back on?
We're back on.
Okay, to answer your question. So there is a process, okay? And we signed an intergovernmental agreement back in seventeen to do the assessment to impediments to fair housing, all right? So you put that part in place, and we're already working on that. So those pieces have to be in play before you can start your consolidated plan. Because your consolidated plan is how you're going to operate your CDBG program for a five-year period. And you pull in the data from your assessment to fair housing. So all of these things get rolled together. And then, so your first annual action plan is part of the consolidated plan, and it goes together. And then for the four following years after that, we do a single annual action plan like we just went through for twenty-eighteen.
So, and part of what the scope is service of, so they'll be hosting public meetings?
I will be doing all the planning, but they will be here and they will be gathering information. We will be working together because in all of that, all that whole public input part is based on what we did when we did the citizen participation plan. So I come to you at various times and you see parts and pieces, but when it's all said and done, I will have created this whole process out of all these parts and pieces that we've been through.
And so in part of the agreement of not to exceed, what, ten thousand dollars?
No, not to exceed twenty-five.
Five thousand. Does that include then on top of that when we fly them in to come and tend the public meetings?
There's nothing. It's, that's the whole kit and caboodle. Their, their travel, their lodgings, everything is within that twenty-five thousand.
If we don't get a good consolidated plan, arguably like we have currently, it really hamstrings our ability to spend HUD money like we want to when we set our annual goals.
That's right.
Correct.
So it is important for us to have a quality plan that is not too specific or whatnot so that if in two years from now we decide that we really want to do something about affordable housing, then we can do that. If we want to do something about safety, we can do that, right?
Let's us be more nimble.
It's important for that reason.
And one of the meetings that we'll be having is with council to go over what your goals and everything have been. So there are going to be many levels, and we'll start with council before we go out to the public. You know, because the reality of it is, is that you guys drive the train. You make the decisions about how that money is going to be allocated. And then we go out to the public and we say, "This, these are the goals and, and issues that have been identified by council. Now we want your input." So that's how it works.
You said you had an intergovernmental agreement with whom?
Moline, Rock Island County.
No.
Can I ask her the questions?
Entered in, and we do this every five years. We enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Davenport and Moline. We are a consortium, and so they work together. Or the, the consultant completes the AI on a, the MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area, but then also looks at each community individually and assesses our fair housing individually also. We do this every five years with the consortium, and they have presented to the council over the years. And if we didn't do it this way, our costs just to do it for Rock Island would be over forty thousand dollars. As it is, we will only pay eleven thousand dollars as part of the consortium.
Thank you. Okay.
As we've heard earlier, and my understanding is with this, we only had one bid?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that normal, or should we have tried to get other bids? And I know you go out on the web and, and all that, but these one bid things, and I think the next one on the agenda, it was one bid also, to be given businesses twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars. It would seem like to me there'd be a whole lot more companies that would want to bid on this. Is there a reason?
Well, we published, we put it on the APA website. We submitted it there, and we posted it on our website. And I'll just be frank with you, I want resource consultants. I have a relationship with the woman who is the president. I find her to be, have integrity, an extreme amount of knowledge when it comes to HUD and CDBG program. She is an instructor for NCDA, which we are a member. It's the Not-for-Profit National Community Development Association. And I just found her to be a great fit for the city and to work with the department. So if we would have gotten ten, she would have been my first choice.
And then what additional funding will be allocated to reach out to some of the residents we're trying to survey that might perhaps need some translation services or some of our other? Is that included into this, or is the city?
No, I, I take care of that because that's part of our citizen participation process. So all of those things will be on us. All these funds come out of the admin. We have a twenty percent admin cap based on our award. So I'm comfortable that we'll be able to cover all our costs and do the best job possible.
So what, so of a twenty percent on that cap, what would that be?
Well, our cap for the twenty-eighteen award is going to be two hundred and seven thousand dollars and some change. Two hundred and seven. It's late. I can't.
Yeah. Yes. One more question before we vote. Where's the twenty-five thousand coming from?
Admin. The admin.
Parliamentary.
The administration line item and the budget, our HUD budget.
So that's within CED's larger budget?
Yes.
There's an account number here, but I don't know what that account is.
That's, anything that has two, four, two in the front, that is CDBG.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-one.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request for qualifications for the implementation of the city's CURLIF program and the development of a Section 108 loan program recommending the contract be awarded to National Development Council of New York, New York in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Move to award the contract in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion?
So this is not to currently run the program. This is just to get help to do the application?
So there's, there's two parts. We were audited by HUD, and we had findings on our CURLIF program, and we need to address that. So that's the first part. And we've looked at what it would take to do a Section 108 loan program. It's very cumbersome, and it takes a long time to get it through HUD. And so what we want to do is we want to prepare the application. We want to submit it to HUD so that all of our parts and pieces are in place so that in the future, if for some reason we would have a project that we could use 108 money for, we would be able to pull the trigger. Because it takes about a hundred and eighty days to get it through HUD and get all the things in place. So again, if you guys came and said, "We got this project," we could not move fast.
And these kind of monies are millions of dollars available to us.
What is Section 108?
Well, it's a loan program that HUD has. They go out and they sell the, they get the investment. So they bring that in, and it's based, the interest rate is based on the LIBOR. Now, you're, I'm out, not in a comfortable area here, so I'm going to do my best.
That's fine. I just said general what it's for.
But for us and what it means to the city is that we can use up to five times our award. We can use five times our award to invest in projects in the city. Now, we don't ever want to set up a project that we're paying it back out of our CDBG money. We want to make sure that the projects that we do, the, whoever we're investing or giving the money to, they're paying it back so that it never touches our HUD, our annual award.
So it's kind of like a loan guarantee?
Yeah. We're guaranteeing the loan based on future award.
So for buying property, redoing property, creating job opportunities for low-income people?
Sounds like another tool for toolboxes.
No, it will not replace the CURLIF.
So this is also a one bid. Have we done business with this company from New York before?
No, we have not. Last September, Ryan and Chandler and I, we went to the NDC conference and found out a whole bunch of stuff. You know, that's where we discovered the 108. I mean, I knew about it, but I didn't know about it. We went there, and we found this NDC council or this, this group. They're very, very good at investment, getting investment. They do all kinds. I, I, I hope you go to their website and look at all the different things that they could help us do. And again, we got one bid, but if I would have gotten ten, they would have been my first choice.
Thank you.
Will you elaborate a little bit on HUD findings? You said something about HUD findings.
Well.
I hadn't heard of that expression.
So periodically HUD comes, and they look at our programs, and they'll tell us ahead of time what they want to look at. And this time they wanted to look at the CURLIF program. Our CURLIF program has never been audited, never. So, you know, regs are put into place over the years. Things change. But our program wasn't changing with the update to the regulations. So that was really the findings that we didn't have. We weren't following the HUD regulations for business development and the revolving loan fund. So one of the things that they're going to do is help us build those regs into our, our documents. Our policies and procedures, our underwriting, our loan applications. They're going to look at the whole nine yards and help us revamp the whole thing.
There was a couple of times that you need to follow up with whoever you gave CURLIF load to. You need to go six months or twelve months, eighteen months into it. You need to go and visit them and say, "How you doing? Are you current?" You know, et cetera. Follow up with the, the loan and the business to make sure it's still operating, and that was one of the issues.
Didn't we just update our CURLIF program policy?
Correct. And that's what, some of this addresses those things, but not all of them.
Did we update the policy after getting the results of the HUD finding?
No.
So we updated our policy, got the results, and now we have to update them again?
Yes.
The current, the current changes were after the findings, so.
Yeah.
The current changes, we just did, yes.
No.
Yeah. Because we just did those.
Yes.
And then we're doing this next level with the consultant. That's the plan.
So the results of the HUD findings sorry, came before we recently updated our policy?
Yeah, when did we get the findings were?
The, the, the CURLIF policies and procedures and everything were done in the winter of twenty-eighteen. We weren't audited until the very end of May.
Twenty-seventeen.
Are, are we still talking about the item?
Yeah.
I feel like the.
Talking about CURLIF.
Yeah, but the vote, the vote is to prove.
We're talking about the rationalization of, do we need to spend fifty thousand dollars for this?
I'm just saying, yeah, the vote is about the, the bid.
Yes, we do need to spend fifty thousand dollars.
I understand that you are opinion.
I'd like to call the question. I'd like to call the question.
It's not, it's not my opinion.
Okay.
HUD has sent us a letter, and they have outlined in their letter the findings and that if we do not rectify those findings, we will not be able, we will have to give the money back.
Yeah, and that has previously been explained to this council. I would like to call the question on this vote.
Before we vote, I'd like to have it on the record, express my dissatisfaction for not having the contracts. At the time, we got the rest of the packet information so we could read them. We're approving something we haven't read. I understand what you're saying, and I support it. You do a terrific job, and so this is not directed at you or CED. I'm just saying, in this situation and in others that have come up in the past, council needs to get adequate information.
And that may have been my mistake, too.
I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. I'm just saying. I still don't have a copy of it.
We'll get there.
And don't give it to me now.
You've already given it to her. Why are you giving it to her?
He didn't get a copy.
Oh, he didn't get a copy?
Everybody gets a chance to speak. All right, ready for roll call?
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-two.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a sub-recipient agreement with Rock Island Economic Growth for the completion of a rehabilitation project at Renaissance Lofts in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Move to approve the sub-recipient agreement for an amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents subject to minor attorney modifications.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion?
Is that TIF funds?
HUD funds, right?
Yeah, these are the CDBG funds.
Oh, good.
That we, Chandler presented here a few sessions ago.
And why is it a sub-recipient instead of just a recipient?
I have to answer that question.
Take your seat right there behind that podium.
Because we are the recipient, and we, yes, we are the recipient of the funding. So we are giving it to someone else. We're not doing it ourselves. So that makes, yes.
Thank you. Will we be able to check on it as it goes along?
Oh, there, yes.
Checks and balances, okay.
Is, since this is HUD, I imagine it's Federal Davis Bacon Act applied. Is it also, does Illinois prevailing wage get involved? Because we're receiving it and then giving it to Renaissance?
Yeah, it said that in the agreement.
Typically, it's going to be prevailing wage rates because prevailing wage is higher than Davis Bacon, and you have to take the higher of the two. And so the Illinois prevailing wage rate is always higher.
Yeah. And so economic growth will be letting the project, I mean, this project will be led by Rock Island Economic Growth?
But they will have to provide to me all of the certified payrolls, all of those things.
So you'll be overseeing that part of it?
Absolutely.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
One second, please.
Sure.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-three.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding an agreement with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for leases of two parcels of land at the Hennepin Canal and recommending approval of the lease payment in the amount of one thousand, one hundred dollars for the five-year term of the agreement.
Move to approve the agreement and lease payment as recommended and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Second. Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-four.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a lease extension with American Bank and Trust for an ATM machine drive-through located on the south side of Fourth Avenue between Sixteenth and Seventeenth Streets for an additional three-year term, expiring on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Move to approve the lease extension as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the lease agreement subject to minor attorney modifications. Second. Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-five.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the lease extension with TBK Bank SSA for an ATM machine drive-through located on Fifth Avenue between Eighteenth and Nineteenth Streets for an additional three-year term, expiring on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Move to approve the lease extension as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the lease agreement subject to minor attorney modifications.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-six.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department. Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Century Woods Illinois TCLP for the purchase and renovation of Century Woods Apartments.
Move to approve the terms of the agreement as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents, subject to minor attorney modifications, and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance. Second. Moving second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Sure.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan. Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Steve, we agree so rarely on things. You could've had me on that one. I apologize.
Twenty-seven.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Heather Ridge Illinois TCLP for the purchase and renovation of Heather Ridge Apartments.
Motion to approve the terms of the agreement as recommended and authorize city manager to execute the contract documents, subject to minor attorney modifications, and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Congratulations the majority on this. It's going to be a very large set of projects here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Large sucking sound.
Item twenty-eight.
Huge.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a resolution approving the appropriation, the appropriation of funds from the city's downtown and North 11th Street redevelopment project area, special tax allocation funds for the payment of land acquisition expenditures.
Motion to adopt the resolution as recommended and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-nine.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from the laborers Local Union 309 to install two-hour parking in front of their business at 2835 7th Avenue.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance. Second.
Gotta read faster, folks. I'm faint.
Moving second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item thirty.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for the removal of the handicap parking space at 1005 17th Avenue.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance. Second. Moving second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thirty-one.
Report from the city clerk regarding an activity application for the 34th Annual Rock Island Labor Day Parade to be held on Monday, September 3rd, 2018, from 9:30 a.m. to noon.
Move to approve the event as recommended? Second. Moving second, any discussion?
Yes, I'm kind of curious, what if this didn't pass? For real?
Let's try it.
No, I'm asking seriously.
Need to hang this, Virgil?
I've been hung before, but I live through it, okay? No, Attorney, what would happen? We're still going to have the parade, right? Whether we approve it?
No! It would have to be a silent parade.
Well, it would be without city council's approval, so I presume that that might be in violation of some of the local ordinances, but they may have a parade anyway.
With about 150 other people partitioned against it. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That would've been a funny one to do, though.
Yeah.
Thirty-two.
Report from the city clerk regarding an activity application for the Rock Island High School Homecoming Parade to be held on Friday, September 14th, 2018, from 3:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Motion to approve the event as recommended?
Second. Moving second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item thirty-three.
One abstention on that vote.
Report from the city clerk regarding an activity application from the Cord Belt Running Club for their annual Nancy Caffey Memorial Classic 5K and 10K Run on Sunday, September 30th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Motion to approve the event as recommended?
Moving second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. You must be an almantra, yes, the way you want to do it. Item thirty-four.
Report from the city clerk regarding requests from Labor Space for outdoor entertainment with sound amplification at 311 21st Street and adjoining green space, the outdoor sale of alcohol by Bent River Brewery, and the outdoor consumption of alcohol in the fenced-in area on Sunday, September 30th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the Lowland Block Party.
Move to approve the requests as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations, and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received.
Second. Moving second, any discussion?
I do, Mayor. I, 10:00 a.m., I thought it was noon on Sunday before you get a cocktail.
Not in the Lowland Block.
All right, enough for me.
No, for those that are unaware, Labor Space is right next door to Rozstock's, if you know where that's at, on the eastern border of our downtown. But this is the third annual block party in that area, and it's a growing and exciting place of our downtown, a lot of unique stores and people, so come hang out. I was in the Dunk Tank last year. I haven't been asked this year.
I'll be there.
Oh, I was gonna say, I'm there.
Is this a new neighborhood, Lowland? I've never heard of it before.
We're trying to grow it, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just that little block right there by Rozstock's, Labor Space, Discounted Furniture, the Voss Brothers Apartment Complex, Roosters.
So who named it Lowland? Because fellow comrades said it was Low Life instead of Low...
Hey, man, you back off the Lowland neighborhood, okay?
So who named it Lowland?
I believe the owner of Rozstock's named it
Okay.
The Lowland Block Party, and it's stuck. So, you know, we got Above the Hill and then we got the Lowland, so we're going with it.
All right.
I strongly encourage you to join me in being there, Alderman Mayberry. I think you'll find it to be very...
I'll do my very best.
Oh, it's a flea market, it's a, there's bands, yeah, it's fun.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thirty-five.
Street closing and sound amplification requests, A through C. A, report from the city clerk regarding requests from Evelyn Day for a street closing at 43rd Street between 20th Avenue and 22nd Avenue on Saturday, September 15th, 2018, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. and sound amplification for a block birthday party. B, report from the city clerk regarding a request from Matt Stofen for a street closing of 22nd Street between 16th Avenue and 17th Avenue on Sunday, September 23rd, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the annual block party for the Highland Park Historic District. And C, report from the city clerk regarding a request from Tammy Johnson for a street closing of 13th Avenue between 12th Street and 14th Street on Monday, September 3rd, 2018, from noon to 4:30 p.m. for a community cookout.
Move to approve the requests for street closings and sound amplification as recommended for items A through C.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thirty-six. My golly, worked hard at this one. Any other business for the, go to the cars.
Well, I'd like to commend the committee for the parade people and that. It's a shame that none of the news media showed up for it tonight when we have something positive going on here. The chambers was almost full, and where's the news media? So as far as the community, this never even happened. And as we've seen, we've seen wonderful people in the city of Rock Island doing great things. Now, I'm sure they got our media packet that we were having this tonight, but they got choices, too, and sometimes we know where they choose to put Rock Island, which is...
Two weeks ago, when we had, did the original presentation of it, it was sent out as a press release and still has not been picked up.
Oh, it hasn't been picked up?
It was published on like the inside cover of the Dispatch, I saw.
You did. No, but I think your comments are very astute, Alderman Mayberry. It's disgraceful that we have the slightest bit of controversy here, and we've got three or four cameras, and they want to do interviews, and they want to slice this thing up and make it into this whole, you know, look at the disorganization in Rock Island, or the controversy in Rock Island, but... And we have an ability to show off people who are ingrained to our fabric of our community that have the skills, the motivation, and the ability to make a difference in this community. That should be lifted up. That should be the top story of this community.
Agreed.
I would like to share with everyone that the Sea Rock Island and the Augustana faculty are quite eligible for the health screening that our health clinics putting on now. It's a huge advantage to us, is it's a benefit, but it's also, it keeps our employment people healthier, long-term, short-term, which John Thorson, applaud him, I don't know, it's probably been five, seven years now. It saves hundreds of thousands of dollars to the taxpayers of Rock Island by having them downstairs. And just want to let everybody know, you got to use it to benefit from it, so.
I made comment, I guess Alderman Spaghetti and I both attended the chambers annual meeting. It was well-attended, there was over 1,000 people there. They had a great motivational speaker to start it off with, got the group wound up. And this year, for the first time, they did several seminar or educational tracks afterwards. And we sat on a couple of those together and a couple separate, but they had some good speakers or people in there for that, some site selector consultants, for example, and some, and so, and then talking about technology and the culture of that and social media. So there's some good topics there that were pretty well-attended by most, so it was a good time.
I would like to apologize to Judith and city staff for the increase in FOIA requests they'll be getting.
Yes.
Thanks to the well-attended FOIA government watchdog training seminar that we had at Martin Luther King Center, so...
I've been catching some heat from other cities and counties.
Not my problem.
I would like to give kudos to my colleagues who voted in support of our resolution a couple months ago, in support of calling for the regulation of industrial hemp. It has since passed the United States Senate and signed into law in the state of Illinois. So we did it. We, but it happened.
Rock Island did it.
And it's a great thing, and I hope that this city, in short order, and our farmers and the warehouses that may be empty right now can start to benefit from a whole new industry of agriculture and the numerable products that can be made from that plant.
Just, you bring that up, I, today had the opportunity to tour the grow facility in Rock Island.
Oh, yeah.
For the first time, and it's quite an operation, and they're expanding, currently finishing. We're doing, did an inspection out there, and I rode along with the inspector with that and got to see the operation. But they're adding some more jobs out there and expanding, and they're already talking about another expansion after that. Now, this expansion internally, their building was big enough where they had some empty space inside, but it's growing in jobs and...
No pun intended, right?
Literally.
I didn't even think of it, but okay intended. So it was very interesting.
Also, I'd like to commend the mayor, first of all, and the speaker. This past Saturday, we had community in the community, like the police chief and the fire chief, they were there also. It was a great event, you know, it was hot.
Yeah, really.
We pulled off, and there was activities going on all over the block cities, so there was huge crowd there. Our city manager was there also. We had a good time while we were out there.
Yes.
That's what it's about.
Yes, that's a good food. Good food. All right. Pardon?
Can we do the same way?
Yes, I didn't know if we were done. There is, one person signed up to speak, Cassandra Cleveland, if you'd like to...
Discrimination is the prejudice against people and a refusal to give them their rights. Ableism is the discrimination in favor of able-bodied people. While you might be disappointed to hear it, unfortunately, you are all still ableists. When are you going to stop the discrimination against my son?
Is that all you have?
I want an answer.
Unfortunately, we cannot answer that.
Why?
Because it's in the middle of litigation.
I have no attorneys representing myself, my family, or my son. So are you, do you intend to wait for the ADA to overhaul all of your policies and as a result, my son would benefit?
On the advice of our attorney, we've got to wait till the findings come through.
When do you anticipate that? Because when I spoke with the Assistant Attorney General today, she told me it could be anywhere from six months to 12 years.
We have no control, ma'am, over when they make their decision or how long the process takes.
But you do have control over your policies and your choice to follow federal regulations or continue to violate them. You do have that choice.
You've gotten our answer. Anything else you'd like to say?